Welcome to you all to the February 21st, 2017 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. This is a public meeting, although traditionally at work sessions, we do not have comments from the public, although we do have one member of the public who I may invite up here anyway. But thank you all for coming out. We have a fairly light agenda and hope we can get through it in a quick manner. Before we do get started, I would, with your indulgence, ask for, or ask to allow Karen Woodson from Alpha Kappa Alpha to come up and just tell us a little about our organization. She had, I think, believed maybe tonight might be an evening where you could make public comment, and you've come out and we are delighted to have you here and would look forward to having you come up to the microphone and tell us a little about your organization and the good work your group does. Go ahead and have a seat if you'd like.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, I represent Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We were founded in 1908 by 20 dynamic women at Howard University, and we have been working with your city for a very long time and haven't adopted a spot at Big Chimney Park. You may have heard about what we did last year with our 1908 park program in making sure that young children had a place to play that was vibrant and exciting and safe. And so we had the honor of having a representative come to one of our sessions, and it was a wonderful delight to have you present and to speak to the organization in a manner that showed our commitment to the city and that you are in support of our programs to educate the public about health care and education initiatives and the opportunity to vote. Across Virginia, it is legislative day with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and we have an initiative for our pink and green lobby days. And so I am here to represent our chapter, which is located here in Falls Church City, Chi Beta Omega Chapter, and support of all of the 36 women that I represented. We want to say thank you very much for your support. So I just thought I'd be here tonight to support you all and to say thank you for your continued support of our organization.
We thank you for the good work your organization does here in the city, and we hope that you will continue those wonderful efforts. And I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments, but thanks for coming out. We hope to continue our relationship.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Connolly.
Hi, Mary Beth.
In addition to being the vice mayor, I am the community outreach person for the school division.
Great.
So one of the things we do is career fairs and other things, so I'd love to be able to be in touch with you and invite your group's members to come.
You can contact us. Yes, that would be awesome. I'm actually an educator, but in Fairfax County Public Schools, and I am a career and technical education teacher, which we do career outreach and a lot of those initiatives in schools as well. I'd be more than happy to partner with you. I've actually worked for the schools. I used to, before I was an educator, I was a buyer for Nordstrom, and so because I was able to start later, school started earlier, so whenever there was a snow day, they called me, and I would fill in until a teacher to get there. Yeah, I could get there and arrive. So I'm familiar with the wonderful, top-notch, blue-ribbon schools of Falls Church City. So I'd be more than happy to put you in contact with our connections person, Ms. Smith, and she will be able to work through the logistics with you. Our president's name is Lynn Perry, and she is the person who oversees our chapter, and under her direction and guidance, we then act upon those directives. So I will make sure that they are put in contact with you.
Okay.
And they should be here at your next meeting as well, a larger delegation, to represent us as a whole.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
You too.
All right, Mr. Shields, why don't we move on to the CIP project status update?
And I'll turn it over directly to Cindy.
Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity. This is the second quarterly update of the new initiative we started last fall, and it's timely because this evening, the planning commission is scheduled to adopt the FY18 to '22 CIP after two public hearings and four meetings. So at the table, you have the CIP notebook for the next five years, which is the version that was presented to the planning commission, and it includes the PowerPoint presentation that I made to them on February 6th. In your council packet, you have the quarterly update, and I included an update of the snapshot format we started last quarter. It's exciting to note that there are more blue, which means completed, and there are several that you'll see that I've noted as will be removed on the next report, but I kind of wanted to make sure we showed some success and you could see it in the next time. It'll look a whole lot shorter because it will not have those blue. The other projects are moving along well, and we're really excited about that. You'll see under Parks, several of the projects with Cherry Hill Park and downtown Master Plan and Big Chimneys are moving along nicely with staff and/or project managers on staff. City Hall and Library are working in design stage for City Hall to come back to you all after the CIMAR contract, and we're working on the RFP for the design of the library with the anticipated approval of the library money come July 1. Voter referendum passed, but this year's budget will actually appropriate that money. A lot of the transportation projects are noted as updates as well, and of course, the public safety one, the most significant there is Firearms Training Center, and you've been briefed on that by the chief. In the CIP memo, I also updated council a little bit on our resource allocation. We've been really working hard to improve the CIP process, in particular around the transportation. So we've looked really closely at how all the comp plan area plans flow into the CIP, and then we design and schedule those, and you'll see when we delve in the CIP later in the notebook that's before you, under Tab 8 for Transportation. We have really planned out those over the five-year period for design and construction, so they work with the projects already underway and the ones that are coming up. The new thing we've added to this with the help of Mike Whitfield with Public Works is developed a staff allocation model, and so we're trying to feed in all the staff that work the project, which is about 10 and 1/2 partial FTEs as we combine Development Services and Public Works, along with our contracts management, so that we can look at procurement, grants, design, and construction, and really achieve end results. And so with that, we're able to model better when projects come on and do we have capacity to bring on those projects, or where do we need to put something out or look, time the grant cycle. So we are refining that process because we haven't been really tracking granularly time allocated to projects, so we're using this year to refine it. But we believe we have a good foundation of that model so that the CIP that the planning commission will adopt this evening and then come forward to council is manageable and doable. It's certainly aggressive because we have a lot of needs, but we're looking to make sure we're managing that and get more blue dots on the snapshot. The final thing I would just highlight for you is the last new graphic that we have in the package. I wanted you to have our snippets, our little spigots, and with Paul's help and Garrison, we tried to create a one-page way to explain all the transportation money, and I found this was very helpful with the planning commission. We did a whole work session last week on just transportation. And so you can, at a glance, see on the left-hand side, these are great resources for grants, and they don't require match, which is a great resource for the localities. On the other side, these are the ones that require match, but it helps us visualize that if we meet the full commercial and industrial equivalent, the CIE, which is what is the local money that leverages 30% money from MBTA, if we fully max that out, of course, we get our full 30% MBTA, those two sources count as local and match all these other grants. So you will see in the CIP as we delve into it during your budget process, with what we're already doing, what's planned in five years, we are using about $42 million of grant money for just about $9 million of local resources. That is the CNIE, so we're really leveraging it and meeting a lot of community needs. So just wanted to let you see this new visual that we floated with the planning commission last week and will be using to try to help understand the complexities of the transportation grant funding. And with that, that was just a quick highlight that we wanted to do as we kick off soon into the budget process to kick, stay on our second quarterly process. We will have a much more in-depth CIP discussion during your budget deliberations.
Okay, questions, comments? Ms. Hardy, then Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Cindy. I had a couple of, well, first of all, I really like the color thing. The snapshot thing is helpful, just to know kind of what's going on. I have a couple of specific project questions based on the current CIP, and then just a general question about the 2018-plus CIP, so I'll start with the easy ones first. I noticed that Cherry Hill Park was one of the ones that was going to be delayed only probably by a quarter. I think instead of having completion in summer of 2017, it's now looking like fall, which I think is fine. My request on that one is just to make sure that we do more outreach of the community. I think there was one session I went to that Parks and Rec had held, and frankly, there were just maybe like three families there, and Cherry Hill is kind of our flagship park. And so I want to make sure that whatever, before we order any equipment and decide on what the replacement structure is going to be, that we either do, you know, some sort of pop-up again at the farmer's market. I think that was pretty successful for the downtown park, so that was probably a good approach to take, just to get more people aware about it. I think people are really excited about the idea of it, and I think if they knew that's where their tax salary was going, I think people would be really excited about that. So we'd love to see more outreach before any money is spent on that project. Second one was about bike racks. I saw that was one of the completed projects, and I know in the past, the mayor and several has asked about getting bike racks installed at both entrances of the W and O D when you enter the city, whether that's on track to be done or if that's considered done.
They're done.
It's done now?
Yep.
Awesome.
Very exciting.
Is there a process for people to request new racks if they want it to? Is there like a request a rack mailbox, or how does that work?
Yeah, there, and I can have Paul add to it, but we do have a request a bike process, and part of that has been built into the mobility for all modes and for people to reach out. And of course, we will be doing the Bike Share program, in which we'll get much more bike stations out there, and we're currently under the ridership study for that piece to determine the best locations for our anticipated locations.
So that's my third question, is what sort of outreach and how are we assessing kind of where the most, the best place is? Because it looked like it was summer 2017 that Bike Share was going to be installed, and so.
It's part of the consultants, and we've secured the services of Four Square, who have done Bike Share studies in other locations and actually have benefited us with three reports now on TDM. They will be doing an analysis of rider and transportation, but also doing some community engagement processes through that so we can really reach out. And I think soon, a week or two, there'll be an update to the planning commission as well as we launch into that public process.
I think out of a bunch of the CIP projects, a lot of good work in there, I think between Cherry Hill getting a facelift this summer and then Bike Share getting installed, those will feel really visible to the community.
Yep.
It's a great chance to kind of get outreach and do PR on that. So that was my questions on the current CIP.
And if I could just add to that on outreach for pop-ups, when I did the pop-up on the Saturday, Bike Share was, and the bike racks were one that really caught people's attention as well as some of the facilities, but did a lot of talking about Bike Share.
So for the coming CIP, is it, am I correct that even years are when we are allowed to put more stuff in? Is that how it goes?
That's the goal.
So what's the big, I guess, could you give us a preview of what's the big stuff that's going in that's different from past years?
We definitely have in the out years additional grant projects for transportation coming in. Let me flip to my notebook. So in transportation, we are picking up some more projects for paving and traffic signals. So we're trying to have traffic signals kind of on an ongoing basis, three to four, as we redo all the traffic signals. And also looking to keep neighborhood traffic calming money, not necessarily new, but that's one that we're trying to keep funded, so I know that's an initiative for the council. And then also looking at North Washington Planning Opportunity, which is the first time we've added that Planning Opportunity area into the CIP. In terms of the general fund, the new thing there would be two. One is the voting equipment that needs to be replaced, and the second would be Rexon Park's request to convert their current open space funding to synthetic turf for Larry Graves' field so we can really maximize that rectangular field, which cannot be used for any league sports due to its poor condition. And that's a way to really increase capacity without having to try to acquire land, and so that would be a new project.
Yeah, Larry Graves' project, the council hasn't been briefed on that. The idea is to take the big field that's behind the softball fields, if you're picturing Larry Graves' Park, and go to a turf field for that. It's currently grass, the grass is in pretty bad shape, there's, it's a difficult situation to maintain. So that's a, would be something we would do in coordination with the Fairfax County Park Authority. We do have control over that field for scheduling, and so we were proposing that we would fund it and we would retain that control over how we would schedule it. It will, it basically increases the usefulness of the field by a factor of four or five. You can use it in the rain, you can use it in all weather, and as we do a high school project, that also might be really important for the transition period for playing for our varsity or junior varsity field to be able to practice there. So that's a new one, kind of a new major one. The idea is to use open space acquisition funds for that. That has been attracted a lot of comment, and has just gone through the Rec and Parks Advisory Board and the planning commission, but the council ultimately will have that project before you with the CIP.
What's the cost on that, estimated cost?
$1 million, a little over $1 million, $1,075,000.
Lights or no lights?
No lights, per the agreement for the park. And it is consistent with the area plan report, and we've provided all of those back to the planning commission as a refresher, and we can have that available because it was both acquisition of open space but expansion of rectangular field. So it's consistent with the priorities within that.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, this is, just to reiterate, a request is, as we go forward with the CIP, I think particularly with the high school project, whatever form it takes, we'll need to do some pretty sophisticated financial modeling, including a worst-case analysis. So I'm just, again, reiterating the request for some of that before we're called upon to vote on this CIP, because it seems to me that we've got a fairly ambitious CIP program just on the city side, and then when you add the schools on top, I need to, I think it would be very useful for the community to model what is the debt load we're going to be taking on. I think the city manager had an example, one of those charts showing our debt load with all of that would be significantly above every other jurisdiction in the region. So I think we need to keep an eye on what does all of this mean financially as we move forward, particularly if we add the high school project in it, and then what does that mean in a tax rate worst case? What does that mean in terms of targeting we ought to be doing for commercial development? I mean, that can be a very useful tool as we move forward. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Can I just make one mention?
Of course.
The city council has approved the Economic Working Group, and we're getting appointees to it now. The planning commission will be talking about that tonight, but a portion of that analysis that you're asking for, I think we're envisioning, the Economic Working Group is working through that financial modeling and with the economic development assumptions built into it. I just wanted to make that comment. I think that's a good vehicle for that analysis.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Could I just clarify what you asked? Are you saying that the Economic Development Working Group is going to provide the worst-case financial analysis on the financing costs as well as the economic development?
Well, the economic development does feed into the overall financing piece of it. And so as we do our financial modeling, I think what we need to do more of, that we haven't really talked about with the council yet, is stress testing it of worst-case scenarios, middle-case scenarios, better-case scenarios, and phrase it that way. We've tried to, we've oftentimes in our presentation, just simplified it down into what we think is kind of a reasonable middle-case scenario. And so the stress testing would be part, I think, of the Economic Working Group because the stress testing really does tie into the economic development piece.
Okay, so they're working on economic development, they're not looking at financing questions?
Well, the financing questions that we've been talking about need to be the sort of the base assumptions in terms of what it costs. Now then, the economic development in terms of how it mitigates that cost is really going to be more squarely in the scope of work of the.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure they weren't looking at 30-year versus 20-year and debt service, you know, assumptions that council would be having to make a decision on, because those are policy decisions.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
So first, I was going to say thank you. This really lays things out very nicely and understandably, so I appreciate this format. Ms. Hardy, your question about the Cherry Hill Park, there was an announcement that went out that there's going to be a community meeting March 1st, that Rec, did you get that one? Rec and Parks is having that meeting, March 1st, and that is going to go out to the PTAs and to the schools as well. Last time they did, after that one meeting where not a lot of people showed up, they did focus groups with students at TJ and Mount Daniel and talked to those kids about what they would like in Cherry Hill Park, so they got a really good sense of the kinds of things that they were looking at. So there is, they have some drawings, there's a flyover video that came out, right? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Flyover.
It just came out last week, there was a flyover.
I haven't seen that. I think that Jim was talking about that with Dan, and I haven't seen it.
Anyway, it shows what the playground equipment is proposed to look like and where it's going to be placed and all that. So that's all out there. And then the other thing is the Rec and Parks Board, at my last meeting, they talked about that rectangular field, and they were excited about that opportunity to be able to repurpose that money. And then my other question is, so all this is so impressive to us, is there a way that there can be a press release or something that says, "City completes capital projects"? Have you noticed all these great things that are done in your city and?
Well, we do them when the projects are completed, and we publicize those. We have not publicized this list, but.
Maybe not the whole, but this is what's underway, keep an eye out for this. Here's, I mean, maybe it can be in conjunction with the CIP being approved by the planning commission, or just some way to let other people know, because this is a really impressive list, and when people say, "Oh, nothing's happening," well, that's not true. There's a lot happening.
Yeah, we do put it on the website so it's available, but we can look at more of a push with the information out there.
Okay, other, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, just to respond to council member Oliver's question, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but I don't think this Economic Working Group will be making any decisions, but they might be gathering data and would welcome questions about what's the cost of doing it, long-term versus short-term, those kinds of things. I would assume that the modeling would include that, so if people have any questions, but absolutely, it's not a decision-making body, it's, the decisions remain with the council and the school board. The second thing is, regarding this list, I thought it was really cool. I went past, I guess it was a Fairfax County school, and it said at the top of the sign, "Thank you taxpayers." This isn't just us, this is our community, and we implement things that the community provides. So if we can work that message in there as well, this is yours. You, we have, you know, been able to accomplish this thanks to your participation, something along that line.
We can definitely do that with our messaging and.
But we don't have to have a picture of the mayor on the.
Why? The signature from my signature.
We have, I have been talking with the Public Works Director if there was a way to do more signage like we did with the storm waters, you know, your dollars at work, but do it with some of our more bigger projects when they're going to be a more of a duration. So we'll certainly look at that.
But even if we put it on the website or whatever, you know, anyway, just a small thing.
Some good feedback, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions on this? Ms. Oliver.
I'm sorry, I just want to echo my colleague's statements about really appreciating this quarterly update. It's very, very helpful. Just one question of clarification on this report. Some of the project names and descriptions are very discreet, and some of them are a little bit broader. And so I think it might be a little bit, if we could maybe just, next time, think about some of these broad designations that are marked as complete. I don't want to imply that we are never again going to restore the tennis and basketball courts. I don't want to imply that we're never again going to replace the synthetic turf. And I particularly don't want to imply that we are never working on crosswalks again. So I just noticed a couple of those items, which I understand what's complete was a specific project, but because that description is so limited, I didn't want that to be confusing. And then my other, just process-related question is that if the planning commission approves this CIP tonight, or a variation of that, we're having a formal presentation on it, when?
Well, the initial presentation will be included in the city manager's budget presentation on March 13th, so it'll be incorporated in that, and then, I'm not sure if we've picked a specific work session for CIP yet. Anything to add, Mr. Shields?
We have not worked out the whole budget schedule yet.
All right. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, why don't we thank you again for the fine work you've done and move on to the next item.
Thank you, council. See you.
So next up is their Streetscape Design Guidelines, and the city council reviewed these. We had a report from the work of the task force, and we indicated that there were a few things, a little bit of staff work we needed to do just to get things ready for council to adopt, and we're here to report back on that. And the request is that the resolution adopting the Streetscape standards be placed on your agenda for next week for council's action. So we don't have a long presentation tonight, but we can just briefly touch on the things that we have updated or any updates since the last meeting and take any questions.
Okay. Before we get started, it looks like we have two members of the Streetscape Committee here with us. If you guys would like to come to the table, you're certainly welcome to. Okay, that's okay, you don't have to. Whatever you all feel most comfortable doing.
I'd like to move closer.
You can move closer if you'd like. Come on up, just come on up to the table.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we get into the presentation?
Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, mayor, members of council. As Wyatt said, this is the second work session that you all are holding on the Streetscape standards. A lot of people, I want to take time here to acknowledge the people who put in so much work to this. Members of the task force met eight or nine times over the course of, I think, four or five months, a lot of hours at those meetings, a lot of different issues being hashed out and discussed. Staff has been putting in quite a bit of work. It's not just me and Carly, it's other people supporting with the graphics as well as background research. All these things always happen as part of a team. Let's see, the last work session was January 17 with city council. At that work session, the direction from council followed up on staff's recommendation to direct staff to go back and clean up and make sure that the graphics were up to speed with the text that the task force had recommended. Staff went ahead and completed that work, lines 21 through 47 of the staff report, highlight the changes that were made. I'll just walk through those quickly. There was a map showing setbacks on page seven that talks about different setbacks on different streets, whether it's 20 feet, 18 feet, 16 feet. That was cleaned up to match the text. Streetlights and traffic signal mast arms, the text spoke to those being black in color, so the graphics were updated to show that. Bike racks, this was a cleanup item that was being hashed out in terms of what bike racks to show. What ultimately got shown was the green little city racks that there seems to be a lot of support for, and then something smaller scale, what's called a post-in-loop. It's a simple post coming out of the ground with a loop around it. Tree planter dimensions, that those graphics were clarified to line up with the text. There were some graphics that seemed to be repetitive, and so those were removed in terms of how things were spaced on a cross-section. So now there's one graphic, so there's one point of reference. The 16-foot cross-section had to be updated, that there was, the recommendation from the task force required a six-foot amenity zone, and so the 16-foot cross-section was changed to match that. Duplicate public art section, there were two sets of public art sections. There was one that had been sort of slowly evolving, and then one that came in and seemed to get everybody's point across, and so the slower version was removed. And then there were some appendices that were there as placeholders, but those never got filled out, and those are covered either in the recommendation memo from the task force or in other parts of the document, and so those were removed.
Thank you very much. Being someone who sat through most of the meetings, I want to echo the thanks on behalf of council for you all on the other side of the table for all the good work you've done. It really is, in some ways, a Herculean task to really reexamine, go back to the foundation and look at every bit of a lot of what makes our downtown, what we want to make our downtown exciting. and look at every bit of a lot of what makes our downtown, what we wanna make our downtown exciting and enlivened. And so it was a lot of hard work. And so I certainly wanna thank all of you for the great work you all have done. And I guess maybe if there are any questions, we can ask those. Before we get started, maybe I could just ask if, A, you have any comments? Or B, if you're agreeable to the changes that were just made? Do you believe they're consistent with the group? Either one of you, if you need to speak to it, do you have any issue with what was just presented?
I don't. They seem to be consistent with what we reviewed.
Great, okay. Well, good. Are there questions or comments from council to any of these folks? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I have a lot of questions and comments. And I wanna thank all of you for the work you put into this because you're starting from zero and it's a huge amount of information. So this is because I like to show examples of things. I took a lot in notes this weekend as I went through this, just questions and things. And there were some things that council brought up at our last work session that weren't answered all the way. But I'm just gonna highlight a couple. For example, the front picture here shows a red bench and a light that faces downward, which isn't our standard. I'm wondering if that could be changed so that it actually reflects what our standard is. There are a lot of pictures in here that aren't Falls Church. They're pictures of Stanton and San Francisco, other places that just don't match. And they're not exactly what we want Falls Church to look like. There's a picture of like a giant parking lot here next to some streetscape. And that's not what our streetscape's gonna look like. So I'm just wondering, and I asked Paul about this today, and he said they were all voted on by the committee, so they can't be changed? And I'm just wondering how that works, if you can explain that a little further.
Sure, if I could. Ultimately, what was voted on by the task force was the document as a whole. Through the various meetings, there was feedback from the task force to staff to make updates, changes, modifications, improvements to the document. And then at the last meeting, there was a series of individual votes on individual items to make sure that the task force had a clear understanding of where the chips had fallen. And then ultimately, there was a vision, I'm sorry, a vote by the group as a whole. That vote by the group as a whole was unanimous on the recommendation. So while there may have been dissension in the ranks about individual items, as a whole, it seems like the group was confident with what was going as a full package. In terms of the ability to change things, council always has that option. The council is the decider here. As the chief policymaking body, you guys have the final vote on this. So the reason the document is being brought forward is that this took several months of work by several members from different boards and commissions to get to one unified whole. And so that's what staff is bringing forward, is the work of that group. If there's a desire on the part of council to rework some of these items or tweak these things, and I think some of the points you're raising are discussions that were had by the task force itself, there's always an opportunity to change that.
Okay. So do you want me to go through each one of my concerns? Or what's the best way to do this? I feel like some of them I brought up at the last work session, and they didn't get changed, which is why I wrote them all out this time. And it could be that other people didn't agree with those changes, or I'm happy to go through each one?
Well, let me just address the ones you raised. And I think it might be easier if we just go through them and more productive use of our time. I agree with you on the cover. There's never a consensus decision raised on the cover graphic. And so maybe just as well to delete the cover graphic for the points that you raised. There are certainly enough graphics on the inside. With respect to your comment on other places that are not Falls Church, that precise comment was brought up during the discussion. And as a group, we agree that what we find in Falls Church doesn't represent the totality of experiences and the aspirations that we have. And so we decided to keep in those things, even though that precise comment was made that we should not show things that are not Falls Church. So we don't have what we need in Falls Church, so this is a way of putting that in there. And I don't know whether you raised another point or not.
On page four at the last work session, I mentioned that there's nothing about ADA compliance in here. And I know I was told that it's the law, so we have to follow it. But I feel like, is this the actual document that's gonna go to a developer? This is what they're gonna take and make their streetscape decisions as they develop? This? Or is this more like an area plan that is aspirational in nature?
This is intended to go to a developer or whoever wants to put up something. Otherwise, there was discussion on what to call this, guidelines or...
Right.
Which list? We decided to call it standards. So it's a design standard. It goes to the developer.
So like figure six on page six is repurposed parallel parking spaces. Is that something we wanna do? Is that something we're asking developers to do for us? It just doesn't seem like a design guideline. It seems like an aspirational, cool thing. But does it actually belong in this document?
I don't understand your point on page six.
Page six, at the top right, there's a repurposed parallel parking spaces in Philadelphia. Like, that's not addressed anywhere in the design guideline that this is what we want. It's an aspirational thing. So this just seems like a mix of aspirational things that we'd like to have and then very clear, specific guidelines, like here's the bench and the bench number.
The things that I think that we could agree as a group in terms of aspiration, objectives, as well as things that we felt had to be hard-lined are included here. So with regard to benches and particularly planners and other things that were an item of great discussion more than once, the group decided that they should be hard-lined in. There are other things that are aspirational. I would say that, you know, with respect to description on page 23, it talks to fire hydrants. There is nothing there that would, in my mind, provide definition to one of the corners that is currently found, for example, outside the Kensington. But no set of standards is perfect. And to have gotten perfection would have probably required a lot more investment of time.
Just a clarification question. So when I read this through, I thought the standards kinda start on page seven or so? And that everything before that was kind of introduction? Is that how I should read them? Maybe just clarifying, that would be helpful to let people know as you read through this. This is more what streetscape is, this is more background. And then when you actually, when we want people to use them as guidelines, that starts on seven through nine, like street furniture, bike racks, trash cans, crosswalks, cross-sections. Maybe just a separator would even help clarify that for the person picking up for the first time might help.
Good idea, right. So anyway, I think there should be some mention of that we value ADA compliance, or there's a lot of ways to create something that's ADA compliant.
But Mayor, ADA is a federal and state requirement. It doesn't matter whether we value it or not. You have to conform to those standards.
Right. You conform to it in a good way. I mean, of course, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's a federal requirement. It just seems like that's something that if we are an inclusive community, we would include in our streetscape standards, that that is important to us. Again, I don't wanna argue with you. I'm just going through my list of things. On page four, in the "to create gateway" section, it's, the word "welcome" is completely missing, which you know is my obsession here. So as I'm reading, the third sentence is, "Any gateway design should announce the community, but should not visually overwhelm the visitor." Can I say, "Any gateway design should welcome visitors to the community, but not visually overwhelm"? Is that something that can be changed, or does that need to be run by the whole group?
I think that precise comment was brought up during the discussion, and we could not come to an agreement on what "welcome" meant. Can you give us the definition of "welcome"?
Welcome means come into our community. We're glad to have you here, not just announce you're here.
Just put it in. Let's put it in.
That's fine. I mean, I just think there's, we can go through all of this. Or I'm just thinking we should send it back to the committee and have...
Please don't do that, I can tell you.
Well, Vice Mayor, the committee, the task force has now been dissolved. We've sunsetted.
Well, then maybe we can make these changes if it is sunsetted.
Well, maybe we can.
Like, the next one is on page four. "Appropriate transitions between the busy urban commercial corridors and the more contemplative residential neighborhoods is important." Contemplative residential neighborhoods? I don't know what that means. There's a convent in Falls Church, but it just seems like this is like a really good start, but not a finished product. And I can't vote for it the way it is. So if other people are happy to vote for it, that's fine. But I just feel like there's a lot that is just not quite there yet.
So what I would say is, I think this group did a whole lot, actually, a whole lot of time was put into this document. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Is it a really good start? Yeah. To my mind, should it be approved and with tweaking even what you've just described? I have no problem with anything you've just described. I have no problem at all with that. And if you wanna go through your comments, we can try to incorporate them right now. I'd be happy to do that. I really don't wanna like sort of send this back to, you know, Never Neverland 'cause I think a lot of great work by a lot of good people, interdisciplinary people, went into getting this to where it is. And so I think the things you've described can be fixed and should be fixed. But in terms of trying to send it back or, you know, redo this thing or let the work go to the wayside is not a good idea.
I don't think it definitely should go to the wayside. I just think it just needs a little more baking.
So why don't we address the comments you have then and try to wrap them up right now?
Instead of more contemplative, we're just quieter?
Can it say quieter or less congested, slower pace?
Go with quieter. Vice Mayor, please continue.
All right, we got page 11. Do we need... Nope, I'm sorry, page 10. The recycling, the description of figure 11, it doesn't list the model number of the recycling cans. Like, can that be put in there so that we get the right recycling cans every time? To match what, okay, the bench says?
Yes, certainly.
Not only that, but Vice Mayor, we also had a discussion about whether we should call the Victor Stanley color black or put in some federal spec number. I mean, it's not perfect.
Right, I know. These are, I mean, there's just tiny little edits that can easily be made. Can we say that every trash can needs to be paired with a recycling can, or is that assumed?
We can say that. That is an existing city policy, and we can add that language.
Let's put it in.
On the bicycle racks? There are a lot of bicycle racks out there, and the ones at the bike stops that aren't either of these. So at the bus stops, the bike racks are just a loop.
Correct.
So shouldn't that be in the picture too, the ones with the loop?
Well, I think the idea behind this is we've done some things in the past we don't wanna keep doing in the future. We wanna come up with new standards in some instances. And so I think the idea behind this was to articulate the new standards, not necessarily articulate what's already in the ground 'cause a lot of those things people didn't like for various reasons, and so...
But look at the next picture. There's the loop, they're the new ones. So do we need to say, next to bus stops, you can have a...
Well, I think the idea was that, next to the bus stops, we already have those. We're not gonna jackhammer them out. But in the future, we think this is the kind that we would like to have. And so we could edit that picture, Photoshop the bike rack out of it. But the idea was, I think, that the bike rack section was showing the new bike racks that we wanna have, that people thought the loops were okay, but going forward, we'd be better off with...
That's fine.
You know, the things, even if we can have the little city logo etched into them.
So let's Photoshop this picture to take out the ones that we're not gonna use, if we're not gonna use those next to the bus stops. Figure 13.
Well, if you're gonna Photoshop them out, then you should Photoshop in the new standard.
You could do that, or you could just crop it, is what I meant, not really Photoshop.
Well, that's to an earlier point, that we don't have perfection in the city, which is why we don't have everything composed of, just stuff in the city, but...
Why don't we just crop the photo on this one, cut it out? That wouldn't be too hard, would it, Paul?
No, in terms of any of these individual tasks, they can all be done.
All right, well, let's do that on that one.
How about, on page 11, the street signs? There are three pictures of street signs, none of which are streetscape. And the James Thurber Court one here is an old street sign that's not on Route 7 or Route 29. So I'm wondering if you could put in a picture of one of those new signs that Kathy Allen made? She did some really nice ones at Oak and Broad that are right there in the streetscape. As far as street name signs go, this is something that isn't optional for the developer, though, right? This is something that we do, right? The street name signs? Or do they do?
Yeah, generally, we do those. It may be that if, you know, like Mason Row may have a street sign, just as an example.
Their own street sign?
You know, it'll be a private street. But at any rate, this would be the standard.
Okay. So let's put a picture of what we want it to look like.
Okay.
All right. The tree planters, and I know there was tons of conversation on this, and I continue to question how we decided that a flush planter was the right one, but I was not there for those conversations. I took a walk to this weekend from Broad and West all the way down to Pearson Square. And none of the planters were great, but the ones in front of Pearson Square that were flush, all those new plants, there's lots of dead stuff in it already that had been stepped on. So I just questioned why, and I know this is not an editing thing, it's just my own opinion, why we would purposely make a planter where people can step on the vegetation?
Well, Vice Mayor, we have that perfect example in front of the giant food shopping mall where we have these raised planters, and we have a bus stop right in the middle of a planter, and people walk right through that planter. I wish you had taken your trip up a little bit further. You would've seen the example I'm talking about.
Could we make this, I mean, is that because it's a really long planter?
It is because it's a really long planter.
So none of these are really long planters, right?
Well, the other side of it is the width issue. In terms of having a limited streetscape, when you have a raised planter, you have the width of the actual brick that can't be walked on, and you have that on both sides. And then you also have the planter pushed back from the road farther as well. And so you limit the area that pedestrians can turn fire.
I know, I understand. It just, in my mind, and I understand that where it went and all that, it just seems that if we're gonna be, we should at least talk about the fact that what we're doing is putting in a planter with plants on it that we're encouraging people to walk through. And does that make sense? Does it need to have a metal grate over it, like they do in DC, to protect the plants? And I know the sidewalk is for walking, and it just seems, that one just seems like, doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, there was extensive discussion about this. And I guess I would say the flip side of that is, somewhat as a maintenance issue, you say this planter looks like hell. Well, if we had the developers maintaining the planters in front of the buildings, it wouldn't look like hell. It would look as the developers want it to look, which is probably really nice. And so that's part of, I think, the discussion we need to be having as a city and a city council of trying to get the developers to maintain their own planters so that they don't look like hell.
I am all for that, yeah.
Whether they're raised or whether they're flat, they're gonna look good if the developer right in front of us is trying to rent units or trying to have commercial space that's occupied. And so there's a great incentive to do that. So I don't think the status of the planter is really so much dependent on whether there's a raised lip around it as it is to who's maintaining it. So, but... Well, the problem that I think many of us had is that we have fairly narrow sidewalks in much of our community, and that having the raised planters has made it so that we don't have enough adequate room for outdoor seating and other things we wanna transpire in our walkways.
Did the committee consider that maybe the setback for a building should be bigger? So that rather than impinge on the tree area, we set the building back a little further? And add a foot or so that way?
Well, we did. We talked about a two-foot or even four-foot wider setback. Unfortunately, that will cost developers millions of dollars and may limit some of the development we might get because you don't have enough depth in the building. You start eating away a couple of feet here and there, and you multiply it by 200-foot wide, by 100-foot high, you're actually talking about some real money and some real space. So absolutely, would I like a wider setback? You betcha. I would love to have two, four more feet.
We decided that was a topic best left for downstream conversations. I'm glad you brought that up. But earlier to the point about maintenance to prevent from someone saying it's looking like hell. On page 26, under maintenance, in the second paragraph, we talk about the ability and the need for building owners to maintain the streetscape and plantings along their frontage and responsible for tree replacement. There's a whole protocol that we've written in here.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that's fabulous. That's something that has long been needed.
I think Mr. Navane had something, if you don't mind. Could he, would they respond?
Yeah, just on the point with the raised versus flush, just to be very specific. With a raised planter, you know, what we found was you lose 16 inches, I believe, of clear walk space when you go to the raised planter because you have an eight-inch brick edge that is now raised rather than flush. But then also, as Mayor Tarter pointed out, you also have to push that planter inward and create a stepping area so, you know, it's not right up on the curb. So you have to add another eight inches there. So it really was a trade-off of clear walk space. And then you have other interests that are competing because I think the group, you know, universally wanted to see, you know, be able to see some, you know, sidewalk dining as well and some activation. So you're competing with that, you're competing with the clear walk space, and competing with the amenity space. So we tried to balance all of those.
Page 20. Just clarifying, are you saying that the decision between the flush and the, and the raised bed planters was unanimous?
No, that's not what I said. I said that there was universal interest in being able to have some outdoor seating and activation. But the, the flush versus the raised, I believe where we ended up was, the preferred position was the flush. But there was still some openness to discuss, you know, on each application. But I would say, you know, that was, that was more of a majority vote, not a, you know, not a universal. You know, because there was a lot of discussion, obviously. This is, you know, a, this was a big topic that we discussed over multiple meetings. But that's where the, Rochelle, please chime in if you saw any difference, but that's where the majority ended up.
It was a contentious part of the document and the part of our votes. And we went back and forth quite a bit. I think it was a, continually was a split decision. But in the end, the flat won over.
Mr. Duncan, did you have some, did you want to say something? Sorry.
I had a question in this vein. So I don't really have a dog in this hunt, flush versus edged. But when I was in Charlottesville about three weeks ago on their pedestrian mall, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, I just noticed the, the different treatments that they give to, to their, they have some, they have some edged, raised beds. Their flush approach is to, I don't know if you can see this picture, but, you know, is to put the grates like right around the tree. And obviously, that cuts out, you know, vegetation and plants around the tree. And I'm just wondering, is there some reason that we don't include that as an option here? Is that not recommended by arborists?
The, the city.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, please, go ahead, Mike.
At the recommendation of the city arborist, she felt strongly that 60 square feet roughly of open space around the tree pits were required for the health of the trees. And so the committee, you know, based their recommendations largely on, on that. And so having that grate over the tree was, I think we discussed it very lightly, but I think we took, I think we went in the direction of having the open tree pits based on the, the arborist, city's arborist recommendation.
I recall actually having a discussion about whether the grates would take away from the surface area of the open pits. I just think, as Mike just said, that we didn't really spend a whole lot of time on it. I think it's something that we could revisit if need be at some later point. But I think there is a lot of fish to fry.
There's also some discussion about people getting their heels caught in the slots in the grates. And it's, the grates then turned to be a big collector of bubble gum wrappers and other assorted. So a lot of discussion already had already taken place. That's why we, we left this document silent.
Okay, so this, this document deliberately doesn't include that as an option, because it was sort of discussed and not, not deemed to be a preferred option.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not telling people in Charlottesville. They think they're very smart.
Yes. On these new cross-section pictures that you added, is that the direction that the benches will be facing? Did you guys talk about that at all? Are they, because most of them face towards the street, or they face different ways at different times. And same with the trash cans. Are they going to be right, like this, right next to each other? Page 16. Is there a sense of?
Yes, so there was a, there was a discussion about the orientation of benches. A lot of benches, you have to figure out which way you want to orient them. And a lot of it is, has to do with the comfort of the people using the benches. So it's uncomfortable to have traffic artery behind your back. And so that means, don't put the back toward the street. The flip side of that is, there's not much to look at when you're looking directly at the major traffic artery. And so you don't want to point the, the bench at the street either. And so the direction that was taken here was to face the bench along the sidewalk view. That gives you a much more interesting view and it's also much more comfortable in terms of what's at your back.
Does it say that in the bench section, that they should face a certain way?
I don't know that the orientation of the benches is covered. It could be that you could end up with a bench that actually backs to a building. That would also be acceptable as well in terms of a comfort and safety standpoint. For example, a lot of the benches that went in along West Broad Street, most recently, they backed to something.
So that's sort of, we're going to leave up to the developer or site plan to figure that out? Is that one of those?
Yes, a lot of this, again, this is really guidance to staff, developers, planning commission. That ultimately, it's the planning commission who has the approval on a site plan issue. And one of the things that's included in this document in a couple of places is mentioned to flexibility. And I'll mention it on page 13, the, the tree planter standards, that the preference is for flush, but there's an allowance to use edged as well. And part of that is because the specifics of any site may dictate one design versus another. For example, at 301 West Broad, the choice was between trees with smaller pits and flushed edges or no trees at all. And so the decision that was made was, well, let's get the trees and the flush planters with the smaller pits. Because it's nice to go for the full standard, but if that doesn't fit, then there needs to be some mechanism for flexibility. Otherwise, you could find yourself in a very barren environment where you end up with something that no one wanted.
On page 19, you've got a picture of a mid-block crossing in North Carolina. Can you change that to the picture on Maple Avenue between Pearson Square and the Lincoln? There's several mid-block crossings there.
Sure.
Does, does one of Pearson Square have a choker?
I think it does.
I would have no objection if it includes the central point of this picture, which is that you have a choker in mid-block.
Right, I think it does. I was over there yesterday. Did it have a choker, Karen? Remember? There are two in that block.
I believe there is one that is that connection between the, the choker that comes out from the parallel parking lane. So I can certainly.
Is it also colored though? In other words, does it have the different, it does have the different color?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's the thing about some of these photos. I think Dan mentioned that we don't necessarily have in false church what we aspire to.
But we have a lot of them, I think.
And if we do, that's the preference. Usually, we have in the city first if it meets all the criteria. But in a lot of instances, we don't have what we aspire to, and so we had to look elsewhere.
Right, right. All right, on page 20. The brick banding around concrete panels. We have that right in front of Broaddale? Can you use that picture?
We can, uh, we can. I'm hesitating a little bit, because that's an example where it's showing a photo of something that exists today that is not in the standard. So that example is specifically along Broad, and the direction is all brick paper on Broad.
So what, why do we have this picture in here at all then? Page 18.
That's shown to provide some sort of transition where you've got all brick in the commercial areas and all concrete in the residential areas. This might be something you could use in that transition to allow the materials from page to one to the other.
So on the other side of the street, in front of Winter Hill, it's the same thing. And that is, is that transitional, because it's residential right there on Broad Street?
And that's where sort of flexibility and bringing the planning commission into the conversation is a great idea. Because on, in one sense, it's transitional from land uses, on another sense, it's still on Broad Street. And so I think a lot of that would go up to the planning commission to figure out, how do you guys want to treat this in terms of consistency with commercial areas, future land use, things like that.
Right, right.
Mr. Star, I would urge you to try to find a picture in the city that conveys the same notion and take it artfully.
Sure.
Great.
And.
Excuse me, Ms., Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Navany?
May I just chime in one?
Yeah, of course.
Paul, I was just wondering if you might be able to be more specific? Because this was the recommendation of the group for Broad and Washington to have the brick pavers. And this is a picture for a transition into residential neighborhoods. And I think when you read the text, it's not clear. So I wonder if there's a way to just be more specific about that?
Okay, good.
Do we specify, and we specify the bricks right here, right? This is the brick specification in this little chart?
Before we, if we're leaving bricks, so is this a speak now and forever hold your peace on? The decision of using bricks, I mean, your comment about, you know, somebody catching their heel reminded me of at least one citizen who seemed very adamant when we were talking about doing the downtown improvements, that, you know, brick sidewalks, particularly when there's any slope, you know, are just perilously slippery and no amount of de-icing makes them safe. But, so you all talked about this, and we're, we're going to go with brick where, where, almost wherever we do a new streetscape approach. Is that, that's what we're telling people?
Yes?
I would just say that, as Paul mentioned, you all are the deciders. But within the group, there was a definite preference for brick. On the main, on the main corridors, with just the aesthetics and the, the feel of it, I think was very important. I don't know if other task force members had a different recollection?
And was there, is there some different kind of treatment about de-icing for bricks than there is for concrete? I'm, again, I'm thinking back to when this came up, I don't know, it's been three or four years ago. And I didn't really have an answer or a point of view on it. But you all, have we advanced the state of the art on de-icing brick so that we're comfortable that we're going to use it universally?
Early on in the task force, the discussion was had, sorry. Early on in the task force, this discussion was had about the mixing the concrete with the brick and different applications. And it was pretty unanimous at that point that everyone wanted to maintain the brick. And then later on, the discussions came about the de-icing and different measures that were available and how we would treat the de-icing and if there would be new regulations that would sort of enforce materials that wouldn't be as harmful to the trees, seeing as how we're going to the flat planters and this and that. And so there is some mention, I think, in the, in the document about using materials that are less harmful to the trees that are also very good for de-icing, but other than that, that was the extent, my, to my recollection.
Okay, so just from an operational public works perspective, next time it snows and the brick sidewalks are whatever they are, we feel comfortable being able to tell people that we got a plan. And this is going to make these as safe as concrete sidewalks, which at least some people perceive to be less slippery than bricks. That's, that's a question, not a statement.
Well, I don't, I'm hesitant to say anything is fundamentally changed. The, um, we do the best we can to clear the ice off all the surfaces. And I understand the comments. I've heard the comments. I don't know that we could document that there's a significant difference between the brick and the concrete. We'd certainly have gotten anecdotal evidence of it. But, um, I think your question is, are we somehow changing what we're doing to make those comments go away? And I don't, I can't point to anything specifically. Yeah.
No.
What else you got, Ms. Collins?
Was there, just as we mentioned the maintenance in the later section about ma, is there any, was there any conversation about maintenance and de-icing? That it's the responsibility of the business owner to clear their sidewalk, or is that?
Well, that's a different.
It's different.
It's a different policy.
Yeah, so it doesn't.
It's in the code.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be in this one?
I don't think so.
Okay. On page 22, the utility cover, the brick, one of the comments, I think it was from DPW, was the brick, they can be really heavy with brick on top. Did the, did the committee discuss doing any kind of like unique false church design on the manhole cover? That, so that it wouldn't have to, because it kind, I don't know.
Well, we didn't discuss the design of manhole covers per se, but we did discuss the, a unique false church look on other places, such as, such as on light posts that we have. And it turns out that that's a very expensive uniqueness. And so the recommendation here was to delete that uniqueness.
Yeah, I was, I figured that's why.
I think there, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that a lot of utility items stand out in the city. So that there are silver irrigation boxes, there are all sorts of boxes, transformers, all sorts of things throughout the city that we want to try to disappear. And so there was a discussion about putting them underground, camouflaging them, making them smaller, putting them inside the buildings. And so that was a very strong recommendation of this body to make some of the boxes and silver things go away.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I don't think this is, this picture of the manhole, I mean, the downside is it may be a little bit heavier for the DPW folks to open, but I would suspect if we had spent time on it, people would say that's better than an iron, you know, not camouflage one, because there was so much discussion about the fact that we've really got to make these boxes and things go away. It's cluttering our downtown in a way that's very unattractive. So that, there was extensive discussion. That was a very extensive discussion.
How about the fact that it doesn't line up?
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I comment on the manhole covers? I'm probably the only person in the world who, wherever he goes, looks at the manhole covers. And I would note that.
I'm with you.
You do too.
I do.
And I would note that in the city of New Orleans, the particular manhole covers there have become public art. And in fact, reproductions of them are made and sold. The other one, it has a crescent, a crescent city, little stars and stuff, again. And then in DC, actually, if you notice, the older manhole covers in DC, they're actually dated. So it's not unusual to see manhole covers dating from 1880, 1890, 1910. I'm not suggesting we change the, the proposal here, but since we're on the topic.
You can get help for this kind of problem, you know? Unfortunately, it involves serving on a local public body, I think.
Actually, there was, to be all, to be serious, there was discussion about trying to have artists paint the different silver boxes and things like that to create a venue for public art. And that's a pretty cool idea, actually. Alexandra's doing that, at least best I can tell, unless it's graffiti. But, um, but they, but I, I've driven by some boxes that have, it looks pretty neat, actually. There was discussion about that, which I think would be great to turn it over to the arts folks and have them paint all our silver or green boxes. So Dan, I don't know, did you have any?
Well, no, but I think in this, in the spirit of seriousness, you said it's better just to get rid of them completely, just stick them in the buildings, so.
Can you do that? Put your manholes in a building?
Not the manholes, but the backflip preventer covers.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of the silver boxes for irrigation. There's a giant box they have a turnoff, a switch, turnoff switch.
Would you put that in there, actually, the new cases should be used as canvases for public art?
Right. On this, on the maintenance section, on page 26. Have those been written yet, or are they a case-by-case basis? The specific standards that the arborist would work with the developers on? Are they under consideration? Are they done?
The Tree Commission is, has taken that on to, to work with the arborist to write something to bring before council.
Okay, that's good.
I will say, for the Kensington and the Lincoln, we have maintenance agreements on that, so there is a template. Like a lot of things, we'll probably try to tweak it and get it better with each one we get. But there is a good baseline that we're working with now.
One of the things I remember Mike Collins talking about is that Arlington, he worked on the Arlington standards? And that, I don't know if you've looked at those as a comparison, but they were just specific enough.
Carol came from Arlington, McCrosskey, and so I think we have a basis. Mike works there extensively, as do I, so I think we could certainly get ahold of those if we needed to.
On page 25, the picture of the statue, I just want to make sure that exhaustive research has been done to be sure that the proper term is man-feeding pigs as opposed to man-slopping pigs?
Oh, good point.
Now, I'm not representing myself as any agrarian, but just want to make sure that.
I understand that man-feeding pigs is the name of the piece.
I, I, that rang a vague bell, and I thought perhaps you had chased this to ground, so I'm pleased. Thank you.
Should it be capitalized then?
Yeah, in that case, it should be as a proper name. Thank you.
Oliver.
All right. And then this picture on page 26. Just wondering if we have a false church. We should have a false church picture of that. So that it's not next to a big parking lot.
Which one is, I'm sorry.
Page 26, there's a picture of people working on a planting bed next to a giant parking lot.
If we can, we'll get us out there this weekend and stage a photo.
Stage a picture. I'm happy to do that. I do that all the time. So then some of these other pictures at the beginning that I kind of glossed over, this, the one of San Francisco, and then there's. this, the one of San Francisco, and then there's Culpeper with creative design. Is there a way to, to just even say in the caption, this is aspirational, or we'd like to consider this, just, I don't know.
I don't think we're even saying it's aspirational, it's just more introduction.
More introductory material?
Because all these would be different standards, right?
Right.
It is a little peculiar that the first picture on page three is of Stanton, though. I mean, doesn't it seem a little peculiar? Not that it's, Stanton's ugly in any way, but, I mean, Stanton is a place that false church never was and never will be.
In hearing the, the comments and the direction tonight, one of the things that struck me, and this was also something that one of the task force members kept raising up, was the need for a table of contents. It could be that a relatively, a one-page table of content shows up in between pages two and three. It includes some of that signposting language that, that explains the first several pages are aspirational, they're about design principles, and then the remaining pages are about their actual standards. That also opens up space to put a false church-specific photo as the first photo in the plane.
If I could keep rolling on that, since the Stanton picture reminds me, I forget exactly, but I've been to Stanton, but if you, if you look at the streetlight at this street, traffic signal, you know mast arm that we show on page nine, this is a question. If you're leaving City Hall and you're walking down towards Harris Teeter, you know, what do you see? You actually don't see the very large Harris Teeter sign. What you see is the mast arm and the traffic signals which block out the Harris Teeter sign. And I've wondered, why do we insist on mast arms at every occasion when the street level ones like they have in DC would seem to be adequate? I mean, nobody is like barreling down that street because they would go through the front door of the Harris Teeter, so I can see there are certain locations on Washington Boulevard and Route 7 where you need the mast arm because you've got a lot of traffic and maybe, you know, elevations or sightlines, but are we locking ourselves in always to having our traffic signals? Like, say, at the corner of Spring and West Broad. That seems like an occasion where, when you replace what's there now, which is the signals hanging on the utility poles, which I understand on the wires we want to replace. Could we replace those with lights that are just on the side of the street on poles rather than these huge mast arms? Is that something I'll talk about, or?
I think some of that would be a research question. DC has a very special place in the country, that they're both a city and a state equivalent, and so, when they want something from the State Department of Transportation, well, that's the City Department of Transportation. It makes it very easy to get some of these urban design ideas in. I think it would be a research question about what would be allowable and what would not.
We did, right on, across from Lincoln, at Tenor Hill, we did put a supplementary street level light because of the sightline, right? So, it's, we can do it, I mean, maybe that's not a good example, because I'm thinking of like, look at Stanton, and I'm just guessing, that can't really see in this picture, but that they don't have big mast arms for their traffic signals. They probably have something that looks more.
They don't.
Yeah, and I think that's, if we want to aspire in certain locations to looking a little, you know, a little more intimate than the big mast arms, I don't know if you want to include that in here as an option, or, it'd be interesting to see somebody propose that as part of their redevelopment, if they were, particularly if they're redeveloping on one of the, the streets that are just off the main corridor, but even maybe, again, like on Spring Street.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to tackle that tonight is to give that direction to staff to look for that, and we can add it to the document along with text that explains when they're appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
All right, what else we got?
All right, and then back, back to page nine, and it's just a question about the streetlights, the color of the streetlights, and I really have no preference on the color of the streetlights, but my question is, how is that going to be implemented? Because we have all these gray and taupe streetlights, we have brand-new ones from the Kensington that just went in about two weeks ago. Is that going to, does that, will that be a capital expense that we have to paint all the streetlights, or will it go block by block, or when they're replaced? How does, how will that actually be implemented?
So, I'll just say that this is sort of an interesting issue. I know streetlights came up several times, and there was always a question about how would the streetlight colors be changed. There are other document, there are other items in here in this document that call for changes. For example, the bench style, or the spacing from the, the street planter to the curb. And this seems to be the one that people seem most hung up on, about how would this actually get implemented. There are a couple ways this could go forward. I think the lowest-cost solution would be when an entire intersection is being redone, to set the color of the, of the poles then, but otherwise, wait for the regular maintenance cycle to come around to change colors.
Why, when, what is the regular maintenance cycle?
About once every 35 years. I'm being, I'm being a little bit facetious. The, I think, I think that the painting that we did this past year was probably the first time they'd been repainted since the original powder coat was put on. And so, that is an issue. We, we have been trying to build into the budget more maintenance, you know, we need more money for maintenance for new pad crossings that we're putting in, for all the streetscape that's being put in, and to take care of all the furniture that's being put in. So, the way Paul answered the question, I think that is, I agree with that completely. We would do that, so if, upon adoption of these guidelines, then we will immediately begin working with developers, and we would go to this standard with, with the black-colored lights. And then, from then on, as we do maintenance, we would change the color to black.
How close was the vote on the color of the, of the streetlights?
I don't remember, it was not.
Is there a strong preference of everybody on the committee for the black? Because I personally have safety considerations. Okay, maybe I've got bad eyes, but you know, if, if for some reason lighting is dim, like there's a power outage or something, I just feel like black posts would be scarier.
My recollection of the vote was, it was certainly not unanimous. It was probably like about two-thirds or something like that, maybe 70%, but I don't know, Mike, you might remember it better than I do.
I think that's about right.
And was, and, but there, and there was some discussion about the cost of implementing a citywide change, and was there a fiscal impact that was discussed at all?
No, I mean, I think that what was just described was contemplated by the group. Is it perfect, are we going to have black everything tomorrow? No. Is it just something we want to move to over time as things get refreshed, as new things get built? Is this the standard we want to have in the long term? And as I said, the majority, maybe 60, 70% said, this is what we want for the long term for a city. And I think everyone understood that it wouldn't happen overnight, that it would be a long-term proposition, just like a lot of things that happened and said, we don't have money to change over, but over time, this is the direction we want to head. And so, that was, I think, the consensus of the group. Again, Mike, I don't know if you thought, or different, or felt different.
We captured all the votes. And we did that a very fairly methodical process. Co-chairman Nabotny and Thurston, you know, embarked on that process. So, that's my recollection as well. It wasn't unanimous, but it wasn't just a very simple majority. It wasn't close, in other words.
Yeah, we, in the final meeting, we had a very deliberate process where we voted on every key, you know, portion of the document that, you know, such as color of lights, such as raised versus flush. And by the way, earlier I said that, you know, it was a majority for flush, but I think where we ended up with the language that, if I remember right, Councilmember Z had proposed a compromise approach, I think, Paul would have checked the votes, but I think it was unanimous that it was adopted. So, even though there was, you know, if you just said raised versus flush, the majority was for flush, but where we ended up in this document was actually, I believe, a unanimous vote, sub-vote on that particular issue. You know, I'll just, I'll go out on a limb with one potential, you know, thing going forward, coming out of the EDA retreat that we had very recently, one of the ideas that the EDA has embraced so far, we haven't taken any action yet, but one of the ideas we've embraced is trying to develop a streetscape enhancement plan, and, you know, take that initiative and start to look at, are there, you know, portions abroad and Washington that could use further enhancement in accordance with these standards? Now, the idea is not to just deploy these, this standard document, the idea is, you know, to probably look at undergrounding some, you know, portions of utilities if we can do it, enhancing some sidewalks where there's, you know, maybe it doesn't have brick or something like that. We're not really sure the details, but going forward, that might be one opportunity that we could work on collectively to figure out how to deploy some of the things if, you know, if this document is adopted. You know, that's just one avenue, so I would throw out there.
Okay, what else you got?
Just my last question and then a comment for council to consider. On page 14, there's a drawing of cross-sections, and you've got a picture of a bike rack, but it's not the bike rack that we want in the streetscape, so could you change that one to be the correct bike rack? I think all the other ones have the little city bike rack on them in the drawing. All right. Thank you for indulging me through all those questions. My, my last question, and this is a process question for council to consider. This is the first time that we've done a group like this, and Mayor Tarter called it the Panhellenic Council when we first talked about it, getting input from lots of groups. And I think it would be a good idea if we looked at how that worked or didn't work, who was involved. When we first chartered the group, I didn't realize that it was going to be a voting group. I thought it was just going to be making recommendations like other groups did. I talked to a lot of people on the committee as we went back and forth, and some people thought it was great, and other people had a lot of concerns about how it was run and who was a voting member and who wasn't a voting member. I was really surprised to find out that Dave and Dan were voting members of an advisory group. Usually, I would, I assumed that council members would have been liaisons, but not actually voting on those things. So, just going forward, I think if we're going to charter more Panhellenic councils like this, we need to really think about how, how, how will that work and what's the process? And we had co-chairs this time, as we're going to talk about the visioning statement, that's really been run by staff, and which is a, which is a more effective way to do it, or how do all these things work? So, I think we should sort of do a post-op and take a look at what would work better. Because when I think about some of these votes, if the two council members are voting and it's a five-four vote, but you voted, but really it would be a four-three vote if you didn't vote because it's advisory, does that change the complexion of how it all works? So, I just think that's something to consider going forward as we look at these things, because some of these are big decisions that, if, if it's a really close vote like that, maybe we're not quite ready to make that decision. And can I just add one comment, which was, when we talked about this before as we were wrapping up, I had made a specific request for an independent survey that people could be honest in to understand the process of the working task, whatever, task force. And was that conducted? Because I didn't see any results in here.
It hasn't been completed yet. The focus at this point has been on making this document ready for the work session tonight.
Mr. Devon, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So, just, just a couple of quick things. I did want to make this comment regardless, because this is the first opportunity to really talk to the city council after the process has concluded. I want to say, you know, I really appreciate the city council initiating this process the way you did. I think we had 18 task force members plus staff, 20 people in a room, given six months to really get through this full document, was a very large task, but I think the entire group, including staff, rose to the occasion. I think we did a really good job. I think the group worked. I think it worked, you know, no group is perfect, but I think it worked really well, given the time allotted, given the task involved, and given the, I would say, quality of the document that you have before you tonight. As far as the voting goes, so the group initially voted on who would be a voting member, recognized who would be a voting member, and it was really driven by city council. So, if you look at the charter that was initiated by city council, there is a list of members and their list of alternates, and the group decided on day one that the voting members would be those selected by city council as actual members. I think the concern that you raise was raised by alternates that didn't have a vote at the table, but that was, you know, that really is driven by the charter that was given to the group. And so, in the future, if this body wants to do it differently, you know, definitely look at the details of the charter, because we're trying to be consistent with how city council set it up. So, but again, I really think it worked very well, having a cross-section of, you know, every, you know, board and commission, I think, in the city. I'm pretty sure we got them all. I'm surprised if we missed any. It was a big group. Sometimes it's hard to navigate with a big group, but I think we were extremely efficient and very effective at actually getting to this, this goal line. So, you know, so overall, I just want to thank you for, for starting that process, and maybe this is, you know, a potential prototype for, for future tasks.
Mr. Snyder?
Well, I'd like to thank you all very much. I mean, it's an amazing job, and I know we made some, some, some changes tonight, but it's really an awesome job you did, so thank you. First of all, a suggestion, I think in the title of the document, we ought to say "commercial streets." We say it in the action that we're taking, but I think we ought to say it in the document. Second thing is, we may want to provide some guidance, or we may want to come back with some guidance in the future. I think going to what Mike said, how about if you're an existing property owner, what sort of guidance does this provide for you? If you wanted to do something, but you didn't have all the money to do it all, kind of what, how would you use this document? Does this give you some clues about what, what you might do? So, that's, that's a suggestion. Undergrounding, a huge number of the barriers in the city result from the fact that we have utility poles all over the place, literally all over the place. Was undergrounding discussed as a streetscape issue?
Yes, it was. I'm looking for the exact page reference now.
That's fine. If it's in there and there's some push toward undergrounding, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to edit it. One other practical question. So, as I walk down Washington Street, the planters in front of, what is it, Westgate, the really deep ones, the ones that I'm afraid that if I'm not watching, I might fall in, and many people would hope that I would never be seen again, but I, I might never. So, does this suggest that that's not the way we're going to go in the future, or yes, that would be a way to go under certain circumstances? So, help me with that specific hypothetical.
Do you want to answer it, or?
Did I? I didn't mean to.
Well, one of, one of the key things that via adopting these streetscape standards, what you were also saying is this is the streetscape design standard for Washington Street and Broad Street. And so, that means that those alternative standards are now repealed. So, the council did adopt the North Washington streetscape standard after that EDOL study, and, and so, those standards no longer apply on North Washington Street.
Okay, so we probably won't see more of the deep.
We would, we would not.
Probably will not see more of those.
That is correct.
Because I, I think the fire service is a little concerned, too. I mean, at 3:00 AM, there's snow on the ground, you know, you're, you're done. Okay, all right. And then one other thing, I want to comment that, that I did notice that, that Elvis was added to Mount Rushmore in the mural on page 25. So, if you, if this is a check as to whether somebody's actually reading it, I actually looked at it and it forced me to go back to Mount, Elvis really isn't on Mount Rushmore, is he? And the answer is no. So, in any event, I thought that was pretty cute. I thought that was a real awareness thing there. So, again, thank you. You guys did great work, really appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other comments on this?
On a very small board, on page nine, the last sentence, the city seal is no longer be required, but good grammar are required, so I'm sure that, I, I appreciate the Vice Mayor's careful attention to detail. I've not been able to apply the same attention to the document, so that leads me to my other point, question about the process now. So, we've, you know, we've made some changes here tonight, pictures in and out. Where, where do we stand? I feel like enough work has gone into this that, you know, before it comes to council and it's passed, that we ought to have a bit of a drum roll and publicity, and the people who worked on it come to council, and is that all going to get accomplished by, are we supposed to vote on this next Monday?
Well, what we would actually ask is if we could get a date, I think March 13th, to have this on the agenda then, so we could make these changes, we can go through and do this scrub. The turnaround, because it's a short week and we also, most of the planning staff, we have a, a big, a big event on Thursday that we're working to get accomplished. So, I think. So I think, is Thursday a doable date?
When you say Thursday, did you mean?
I'm sorry, the 13th, March 13th?
Yeah. Yes.
And will the survey be done by then?
I can look at that. It's a question of how long you want the survey out. That we probably won't get started on the survey until after we've got these changes made. So if you're looking to have both the changes and the survey day, we could get back to you with another date.
I think it just would be helpful to understand how well the task force works. We've heard from the very passionate members that are here tonight that it worked really well. I just want to make sure that when we vote on this, that we understand how the process worked. And if people suggest that it needs to go back around to different boards, I mean, I don't know what they might suggest as improvements, and I don't want to complicate things. But I'm thinking about just a very simple survey that would allow people to sort of comment on the process. And I understand you can't do three things at one time, but if we could have it done.
This is a survey of the members? So this is not a community survey? This is? Is that, that's a separate issue that relates really to council forming these types of task force in the future, correct? It's a governance issue, not a streetscape issue.
Right, but it would also be nice to, we could ask specific questions about this if we, it's more of a governance issue, but I think it relates. But it would, I mean, I think you'd only have to have it open for about a week, if that.
I don't want to, I don't want to do sort of calendar math at the table, but I'm thinking about, you know, if the action is on the 13th, and then the packages due the Wednesday before, and do you guys want to see it at the work session or at the action? And then how do these days stack up? It gets out for a couple of days, there need to be a couple of days for analysis. That's what I'm worried, I'm watching these small number of days pile up into a significant amount of time.
I think that the, this could be a very simple, three-question survey.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm hearing is, was it good for you, too? So if that's the primary question, you can get the answer to that very quickly.
That's true. It's pretty simple, the questions.
Yeah. And that allows certain members of council to feel more comfortable about voting yes, then I would say, get that out there and get it done.
Okay, and so we would also make the assumption that with these changes, then we would just go straight to the 13th. We don't have a work session scheduled for the 6th currently, and so that would be the plan.
And would, will you send it back to the committee to take a look at it as well?
That would not be our intention unless there's specific direction to do so tonight.
I mean, I don't think it's, oh, here, Mike, you responded.
I wouldn't. No, I think we, I think the committee felt like it did the work that it was asked to do, and it came to a good conclusion to reassemble for the purpose that we're talking about. I think would be honestly a waste of some volunteer time. I think you all as deciders should probably, if you want to tweak a few things, you should do that. That's just my opinion.
But you will invite the committee to attend on the 13th for the adoption.
Sure. The streetscape has been made aware of all the events for which this has come forward to council.
It'd be great to have a special invitation to have them all there, to thank them en masse.
One of the things that was discussed throughout this was the potential need to maintain
a group that would not necessarily oversee this document, but rather make changes, forgive me for my ignorance on it, I don't know how it would work, I don't know how it would get established, but there was some consensus on the idea that maybe another group moving forward as it pertains to this document would be helpful. Maybe even to just sort of adjust it with the times and/or adjust with the times, but that was a big part of it.
Wyatt, in terms of in-process site plans that these standards would apply, I know that Mason Road's already submitted, are there other ones that are pending where this is important to kind of get done so that we can apply them to upcoming projects like Inza Virginia? Will they have streetscape that they'll need to do?
We don't anticipate that one immediately. So it's really, I think, just the Mason Road project.
For all in Washington?
Yeah, but they're very early in their conceptual planning.
And Inza Virginia, the site plan was approved in December, so.
Mr. Devan.
Just two last quick comments on the resolution itself, if I might. On line 148 of the resolution, so that's page five. I blame myself for this. One of the things we talked about in the task force was requiring building articulation. And I think that's the wrong way to say it after, you know, reflecting on a little bit. This is under, this falls under the recommended potential code changes or zoning ordinance changes that would potentially follow up adoption of this standards document. What we were really striving for there was to require some additional targeted building setback to provide opportunities for additional outdoor dining. So in other words, the recommendation was, you know, for portions of your building, you could set it back two feet or four feet or something like that. So you have a little bit more width in your sidewalk, and you get some outdoor, better outdoor dining opportunities, because with four feet or five feet, whatever it is, you can only fit like a two-top, especially if you're serving alcohol, because you have to have a fence and you have to have three feet to get by it. So I guess my suggestion, you know, for staff would be to maybe reword that so that it's more specific about what we're trying to do to provide additional setback in certain areas for opportunities for outdoor dining. And my other comment.
Can you tell me, what's line number?
148. And I would just say in general, the three recommendations for zoning ordinance changes, several setback changes, as noted here, the group was unanimous on that and felt it was really important, ensuring that you actually get a true 20-feet setback for new buildings, and then also this, you know, potential additional setback in certain areas for the outdoor dining. The last, the second comment I wanted to make was, the group did have a list of items that it thought, you know, some future group could work on. That was pretty important. But the one that really, I think, was the most important was the outdoor dining standards or outdoor dining design guidelines. And I don't, I don't know if it's in here or in here in the resolution, or if it's something that is just, you know, followed up on, regardless of who does it, whether it's staff, whether it's some other group in the future. You know, I can tell you that when we walked Broad Street, I mean, we, there were certain areas where you just, you saw if there were certain design, outdoor design standards or guidelines, it would improve the situation. I won't mention the retailer, but for example, there was one retailer with very large round tables in the streetscape. And it's a very inefficient use of your sidewalk, streetscape, and it leaves a lot less clear width. And if you had rectangular tables that were pushed against the building, you could still fit four people around it, but it gives you more clear width. And so those are the types of things that in the current city process, we don't have. We have an outdoor dining permit process, but we don't necessarily have guidelines or standards. Other jurisdictions do have it, they're extensive. There's a reason we didn't take it up as the group, because they are extensive, and they really get into some details that are important and take time to go through. So I would just throw that out there as an important follow-up item. Thank you.
All right, anything?
One last question. Will there be a checklist for a developer then, to be able, so they don't have to look through this whole pretty document, but to be able to say, is that, will that be part of site plan?
Yes, staff could prepare a checklist.
Just to make sure everything gets covered and not missed.
Okay, anything else? If not, thank you all again, and hopefully we'll be seeing you soon. Thank you to staff as well, and hopefully you've taken some good notes, and we can address the comments and hopefully move this towards implementation. But thanks again, and let's move on to the next item, if we could.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Paul. And the gang rolls on. So we have before the council, the vision chapter of the comprehensive plan, and the request for this tonight is for this to be put on the agenda for the 27th for action. The, Paul does have a PowerPoint presentation for this that's available, and so one of the questions for the council is, do you want to go through that whole PowerPoint presentation? Or we could sort of handle sort of the highlights from it. A great deal of work, of work has gone into this process, and some of the key documents that I think, just in terms of process, that I would alert the council, too, is you have in your packet the public engagement report, which details the really extensive, a lot of it innovative and sort of groundbreaking ways to get input into this visioning process that Paul led with our planning staff. And we have some of the information that was used at the town hall meetings, including some demographic trends, population trends, some fiscal impact trends in terms of answering questions that people had about development, how it is working financially or fiscally for the city from a sustainability question. There is a great chart here, a matrix that has all the board and commission comments, so you can track those and then see how those get factored into the document. And then ultimately, what you're being asked to take action on after tonight's discussion with comments and final input, and then a scheduling discussion, would be this chapter, chapter one of the comprehensive plan. So this really was, if you think about your retreat in February last year, the big priorities were getting these streetscape standards done. That was, I think, had the most dots, and doing this vision work, addressing the big-picture vision of where we want to go as a city and what kind of city we want to be in, so that all of these smaller decisions can be aligned with a bigger idea. So it is, I think, it's good now to be able to sort of track progress. These were some of the two, two of the big items on the work plan for the council, with of course, the campus, the high school campus being probably the third of the big ones on the council's work plan. So with that little bit of a long-winded introduction, let me turn it over to Paul, and then we'll have questions, discussion.
Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly, and members of council. What I'd like to do is just introduce some of the items in the staff report, and then raise that question of whether to go to the slideshow or not. As Wyatt mentioned, this is the last scheduled work session for the council prior to taking action. What's been advertised, although that can always be continued if it's appropriate. What's been scheduled is an action at council's next meeting on Monday, February 27, to make a change to the city's comprehensive plan by making Falls Church 2040 an update and replacement to the existing introduction and vision chapter in the city's comprehensive plan. That's consistent with what the city has been doing over the last several years in terms of a chapter-by-chapter update process. I see a lot of folks flipping through the slides. Is it worth bringing them up on the screen and jumping through maybe some of the highlights?
I'm okay not doing that.
Okay.
Do others want to look at the slideshow?
The slideshow is just to let people know what's in there. It walks through what was the scope of the effort in terms of why was visioning launched into, and also what is visioning and setting that long-range goal. It went over the public process that was used to get to this point in terms of the community meetings, the pop-up meetings, the survey, the number of respondents, the amount of participation, and then those three streams of information feeding into this draft document, the public input, the feedback from the general public, as well as the inputs in the city's previous planning documents. That no planning document stands alone, it always builds on the shoulders of what people have done before. Also included was some trend information that had been raised about population trends in and around the city, and that's included in separate memos as well in the package materials. One thing I want to talk about is the planning process for city's comprehensive planning efforts. One of the things that's come up recently is the role of the council, the planning commission, other boards and commissions, and how comprehensive planning gets done. The planning commission is set aside from the other city, from the city's other boards and commissions, that the planning commission by city charter as well as state code has a special role in comprehensive planning, that they're actually given the responsibility for authoring that plan. Now, it's not the individual planning commission members in the city of Falls Church that do it, in more rural communities it may be. But what that means is that the planning commission is one of the chief bodies that takes planning, that takes comprehensive plan updates through the process. So the way the city has worked this process with Mobility for All Modes, Transportation Chapter, and then Parks for People, the Parks Chapter was that it was the planning commission and some other group, so CACT for transportation, Wreck and Parks for Parks. In this case, it was council for the vision, that those two groups have been working the document as it comes up through final action. What's happened until this point is that the general public has given input in terms of their interests, their concerns, their hopes, their fears for the future. Staff tried to wrap that up into a draft document, present that to council, boards and commissions, there was feedback on that. That led to another evolution in the materials, that went to council, I'm sorry, to the planning commission. Planning commission acted on that last week, making their recommendation to council, and now it's up for council, that while planning commission is the authors, you guys have the final say in what is the city's comprehensive plan and what isn't it. So there is leeway and flexibility in here for council to make changes to this document. In terms of changes that have been made, as I mentioned, it's gone through quite a process. Those changes since this group has last seen it, that last work session you all had on this was November 21, lines 31 through 48 summarized those changes, and they were to the content portions of the chapter. Some of the chapters about background, the legal authority for planning. The changes were made to the vision statement, the core values, and the community indicators. In terms of vision, that's been a process of evolution throughout the effort, making sure that interests are accommodated and that the relationships are adequately conveyed. And that last statement that speaks to population growth, you'll now see that population growth is seen as a means to an end. It's not an end goal in and of itself, but it's designed to, if the goal is to have high quality of life and to pay for that through the commercial areas, then population growth is a part of that. Core values, there was language to clarify what the expectation is for these core values, that these are things that support the vision. These are the tools, and the core values are the toolbox, the individual values are the tools that make that vision a reality in the year 2040. And also clear language that these values apply not just to one individual chapter, but to all subsequent chapters. And lastly, community indicators, these were changed over to a draft status to be worked on through further conversation and refinement with the advisory boards and commissions. And that would be done over an iterative process over a number of the city plan, the city staff plan at this point is to wrap those community indicators into an annual city profile. That could also be another way to highlight CIP project status and completion and what things have been done. It could also wrap in the community indicators there, and that would give a mechanism to review these things regularly. With that, I'll turn it over to council.
Where's the red line of the vision statement? I'm not sure I saw it. Is there?
The history of the vision statement is documented in the staff report itself, begins on line 167 and goes all the way through to line 216. What's shown, the underlines, are the numbers for the vision statement, number five is the current one. And it walks through the history of those things of what was the vision statement on particular dates and which groups were seeing it at that point.
So what's the latest iteration of it?
Line 170 through 176. I'm happy to read it out.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
And what's this based on? This 170 through 175? Whose version is this?
This is the version that was recommended by the planning commission at their February 6 meeting.
Okay.
And attach, excuse me.
Yeah, of course.
And attachment nine is the suggested alternative from the vice mayor, which is back further in the packet, is that right?
Yes, it's the last attachment in the packet.
Yeah.
So this is approved, 170 was approved by the planning commission on February 6?
Yes.
Okay.
And did they, what was the nature of their exposure to the vice mayor's proposal, and what was the discussion about it?
Sure. The vice mayor's proposal came in close in date to the planning commission action, and so to give the planning commission as much information as possible, what was completed was a blue sheet, if you will, something that was presented at the dais, and that allowed staff to do an analysis of what are the two vision statements. You'll see that on the, the front page of attachment nine is the email itself, putting forward the alternative language. The back of that sheet is an analysis completed by staff and that was presented to the planning commission. On the left side is the statement that was recommended by staff, and ultimately, a On the left side is the statement that was recommended by staff and ultimately approved by the planning commission. What was on the right was, what's on the right is the vice mayor's draft, and then the table below walks through what are the similar elements in terms of the planning horizon, the setting the context and location for the city, what kind of place it wants to be, what are the values of the city, what does it invest in, and so forth. The conversation at the planning commission meeting was that there was a conversation about what's the right way to go with this, that there was a desire to see a smoother reading vision statement. That was something that planning commissioners raised. They appreciated the clarity of writing on the vice mayor's draft. On the flip side of that was a desire to see something that had been worked on and contributed to by all of the boards and commissions over a several-month process, and something that the planning commission had previously reviewed, or at least substantially previously reviewed. I think there was also a conversation about how to discuss population growth. This was a conversation topic not only at the February 6 meeting, but at the prior work session by the planning commission, and they wanted it clear that population growth was not the goal, but rather, population growth that feeds some other means was, means some other end was the goal.
I'm sorry, so you just said that part of their deliberation was just they wanted what was inputted from the different boards and commissions? Is that what, did I hear you say that?
Correct. It was two-part. One, it was making sure that they were more comfortable with what's labeled version five, because the boards and commissions had seen something very similar to it, and that version five was a direct product of, I don't want to say wordsmithing, but updating the language that the boards and commissions were providing. It's also a version that the planning commission had seen in their work session.
Sorry, I'm losing track of which version.
Sure.
I thought the boards and commissions saw vision statement three.
Correct. So, what went out to the boards and commissions was version three, and that's how it's labeled in the staff report. And then what happened is that by going to each of these boards, they had specific wording or language that they wanted added or removed. For example, the EDA was focused on environment as opposed to natural environment. Wrecked and Parks was very interested in parks, wanting to get feedback from civic groups as well. The Chamber of Commerce was interested in local shopping and dining. And so, as that language was suggested by the boards and commissions, it was added into the vision statement, and that's what was presented to the planning commission.
Sure.
Did anyone else watch or listen to the planning commission meeting? My impression of that is that the planning commission voted on this version number five because they were under the impression that this is what all the boards and commissions had vetted. And my impression of the meeting is that as they looked at these two drafts, they said, "Well, let's go with number five, because that's what all the other boards and commissions have already commented on." But that isn't what any of the boards and commissions saw, to my understanding. I thought they saw version three, and then this was this, and that they weren't corrected and told, "Well, it's close, but this is not exactly what boards and commissions saw." So, that's kind of frustrating to me that that wasn't conveyed clearly to them, so they understood. They also thought that this came in at the last minute. I sent this to you January 14th, before they ever saw this version. So, I'm a little frustrated that they weren't, I mean, there's a way to combine these two, and mine's not particularly great, but there's a way to combine that information, because this is all based upon what I heard from boards and commissions as well. It's not just made up out of thin air. So, I just feel like the planning commission started out with the conversation saying, "Yeah, we really like this draft, but it just came in at the last minute, and we've already looked at this one, so let's approve this one." So, I just want to make sure that that's clearly understood by everybody, that the planning commission didn't appear to have all the information. I wasn't at the meeting, but I did listen to it.
I think one of the things that was, what was tried to be conveyed to the planning commission, I think the planning commission understood, is that going off of that version three draft, if you sort of follow this matrix, each board and commission generally had a key thing that they were concerned about. And so, in the draft that ultimately was version five, every one of those was wrestled with in some form or fashion. A word was dropped, or another adjective was added. And that's the process that I think the planning commission was trying to say, "Okay, well, that's what fed into this version five that ultimately is before us." I think your case would be, you went to a lot of those meetings as well, and you tried to do the same thing, and so, there's two versions. And so, you know, I think that's something for the council to consider, you know, which way you would like to go. I do think that what was taken to the planning, I guess the main point is, what was taken to the planning commission was a real sincere effort to take this whole matrix of information and try to distill it down. And knowing, you know, I went to some of those commission meetings also, and there's a lot of passion behind those words, and so, there is some risk with going with a new draft, where you know that some of those decisions might not be reflected in that new draft, you know, that's just, I think, something for the council to be aware of. And even in, obviously, in the version five that's before the council also, it's not, every board and commission doesn't have their exact thing taken care of necessarily. Certainly, there was an attempt to do it, though.
And it's not easy to take all that information and distill it down.
And it does have, it can have the effect of it reading like, as you say, reading like it was written by a committee, because a lot of it is, I want, my buzzword needs to be in there.
Right. So, there's probably a way to combine these two and come up with a version six that includes all the right buzzwords in a more fluid way.
While we ponder that, could I ask? I noticed that the first three versions do not include the slogan "Little City," and that the fourth version does include that sometime between November and January. I'm wondering who decided that that slogan buzzword needed to be included, and...
That is correct. The EDA was actually the first group we went to, and that was the first comment we got, was including that branding, that it's showing up on the bike racks, it's showing up in the seal. And so, the idea was, if this is going to be the city's brand, let's put it in the vision statement.
Mr. Z, do you have something to say?
I've changed my mind.
I don't know what your mind was first, but I'm intrigued to hear the journey.
I've changed my mind. Thank you very much for the opportunity input.
So, I'm not sure where we are. I like the vice mayor's version. You know, the other alternative does sort of read like the State of the Union speech, where, you know, as the manager says, everybody fights to get their buzzword in there. Just, you know, from my personal perspective, I do see the Little City brand, whatever, as a slogan and not really a vision. I mean, I don't feel like I get up, I at least don't get up every morning and aspire to make the city little. I can appreciate its value as an advertising slogan or whatever, but if you're talking about a vision that goes out to 2040, a vision to me seems a little larger than just, you know, the brand of the day. You know, the Little City brand has been around for a little while, and I guess I'm guessing that by 2040, it may have kind of played out, and we'll have another brand. Or, you know, conceptually, we'll have the same feeling about ourselves, but we'll find a new way to express it, just because that's what you do in the branding business. If you've got the same brand, you know, 23 years from now as you do today, you're probably not going anywhere. There's some exceptions to that. I mean, there are some brands that are eternal. Virginia's for Lovers has been around a long time. It's always seemed a little odd to me. I've never quite figured out why we still have it, or had it to begin with, for that matter, but, you know.
BMW has had the same slogan since 1974.
Yeah, well, certainly are exceptions, but, you know, I do return back to my initial thought, which is, the vice mayor seems to capture the concept of the value of being a small community without aspiring to be the capital L, capital C, Little City.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a question about the attached materials. Where we're talking about the community involvement process, it'd be really helpful to include the pictures where the dots were placed. There was a slide where you did that before, and I think that really helped illustrate where folks were in a couple of those meetings. This is the public engagement report. So, if you could include that, a couple of those screenshots, I think that would be helpful, unless you did include them.
If I could, on page 13 of the document itself, there is a photo of that dot voting exercise, of one of the dot voting exercises.
Okay, show me where that is.
This document.
In that one.
The actual chapter itself.
The actual chapter.
The idea was to highlight that, so that everyone knew, these are the kinds of issues we were talking about, and these are the kinds of results we were getting.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it was so small, and, okay, good, all right, great. Thank you for including that, I appreciate that. Where we're describing the history of the city, we really didn't emphasize the role of the schools, which has been so fundamental to the city's development. We talk about 1950s to 1990s, post-World War II suburban development, but we really don't talk about the salient role of the schools, and it's a little hard to describe our history since then without focusing on that. So, those would be a couple of points there. And then, I like the vice mayor's approach. I would just say, in the second paragraph, she says, "By investing in neighborhoods," I would say, "community services and facilities," because I think our services like police, fire, and emergency medical are fundamental to the quality of life here, so. Other than that, I kind of like the work the vice mayor has done on this. Thanks.
So, a process question. So, given that there are several of us that like the vice mayor's alternative draft, and the planning commission adopted or approved one version, and boards and commissions, what's the recommended step? What do we go, do we wordsmith tonight and then go out with a new version that recirculates again?
I think there are a couple steps forward. At this point, the planning commission has made its recommendation. I think in looking at the comparison of the two statements, there is a lot of similarity in the meaning or content to them, so I think if they are text changes or text amendments, we can check with the city attorney on this, but I don't think it has to go back to the boards and commissions and the planning commission at this point. And so, it would be open for the council to take these ideas, put them perhaps in a different set of phrases or ordering, but if they're consistent with what's been coming up in terms of comments from boards and commission, general public, planning commission, then I think that's consistent with what the group has been hearing and could proceed without going back out.
I'd hate to delay it further, but I feel like, you know, if we did make changes tonight, even if we weren't required to go back, I would at least like to circulate back over email at least, with all the boards and commissions, like, "Hey, here's the draft that council is considering, send in your input, speak now." Even if we're not required to by law to, you know, go back out again, it seems like it'd be nice to confirm.
There is certainly a built-in step, that is, a public hearing is required before action on this. So, it could be done as part of that public hearing, and comments could certainly be presented as part of that.
You're really, I'm sorry, you're really kind of not giving people kind of an opportunity that I think you're really suggesting. I mean, between now and next Monday, it's hardly...
Oh, no, I don't, I think at this point, it's already a given that the public hearing next Monday would be continued to some other date in the future. I think it's just a question of how far does that want to be continued?
Okay.
The level of input that wants to be received from the boards and commissions.
I mean, my own view is, I'd like to move quickly on this, but in view of the change, I think just as a matter of courtesy, give the public an opportunity to look at it.
But we don't need to do an official, "Send it out to boards and commissions again," gather this matrix of information, right?
No, and I think you've hit on my hesitancy there, that from the November 22 meeting, it took us three months to get back to where we are, so I'd like to avoid that process. And it seems like I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads on that, so we can find some middle ground, certainly reaching out to the chairs or all of the boards and commissions, but maybe it's asking specifically for the chairs to talk to your members and come back with some comments.
Or is there a friendly and polite way, we can just go directly to the members? Instead of, and to the, all these individuals that were in this public engagement, because there's so many that attended meetings, and...
We have an email list for everyone that provided, we have an email, an email list with everyone's email that provided it, and we have been doing distributions over the last couple of months, letting them know the adoption process and the latest materials. We can blast that out again. If there's updated language that the council specifically wants to push out, as well as the boards and commissions, it's, the reason for reaching out to the chairs is that there are public meeting requirements, and if you reach out to the chairs directly, the expectation is that they reasonably represent the group, and it speeds up the feedback process.
So, you can't just go directly to the...
I think that's wise, whether we can or cannot, or should or should not, go directly to all the membership. I think it's wise to engage the membership through the chairs. It's just my theme about that.
And my one idealistic comment is that I think it would be preferable if we could approve our vision statement before we're voting on a budget.
So, as I'm comparing these two versions, the words that are missing are "local shopping and dining," "small town," and "population growth."
If I could, I think it's "small town character," not specifically "small town," but the idea of people know their neighbors, and they can get involved in local governance, and they can pick up the phone and call Stafford at City Hall.
So, where it says in the second paragraph, "The city preserves community character," can we say "small town community character?"
Mm-hmm.
And then, to get "population growth" in there, the last sentence, "the continual rejuvenation of robust commercial areas and population growth, support the high quality of life."
I can see I'm not really supportive of having population...
That was something, if I could, that's what the planning commission wrestled with, and so, that last sentence in version five puts the cause and effect in the right order, that if the desired state is high quality of life that's supported by the commercial areas, then the way to get there is to keep rejuvenating them over time, and the key to that is making sure there's an increasing demand for goods and services there. And that's where population growth comes from. There are two ways to increase demand. One is increasing wages. City's wages are already about as high as you're going to get in the region. The other way is increasing the number of shoppers, and that's where population comes in.
So, what if we took that last paragraph, last sentence from version five, and just popped it over here as the last sentence?
I personally don't, to me, I don't know if population growth really, in my opinion, belongs in this, that's, I don't, I really don't.
That was like the whole, that was the other half of the whole conversation in the planning commission.
It may be.
There's a big conversation about...
I think, I probably was one advancing. I actually like the way the vice mayor's version phrases that. I mean, "deep commitment to progress and growth" is, I think, good.
I don't argue with that. I just don't think that we have to say "population."
All right, I agree. So, I would not do what you just said. I would keep what you have got, because I think what you've got is sufficiently deeply committed to progress and growth. It doesn't bring up the word "population," and it, just, growth can mean a lot of things. It can mean numbers, it can mean, you know, quality of life, it can mean, you know, educational attainment. I mean, growth is a, anyway, I think it's fine.
Karen, you wanted "walkable" in there.
I like the word "walkable," and I know that in the last 3.3, 3.2 years, however long it's been, this council has spoken quite often about walkability and using the word And I think some of what's captured by that, or what I think people intended by that is captured in a very subtle way in some of the other things. We have multimodal transportation, for example, and facilities. And I think it goes back maybe to a little bit to what Mr. Duncan said. The Little City might be our slogan. Walkability might be the way we talk about important initiatives we have. Maybe it doesn't need to be directly in the... we have, maybe it doesn't need to be directly in the vision." And I say that only because the less we massage this, the smoother it's probably going to read.
And you'll end up with kinda that cluttered by committees.
Yeah. So...
There may not be a big difference between... There may not be a big difference between a large committee and a small committee at the end of all this, which is why I chose not to participate. Thank you.
So the one change we have right now is preserves its small town community, so add the word small town.
And community services and facilities.
Okay.
If people like Mr. Snyder's.
Investing in neighborhoods, gotcha. Community services and facilities.
And then local shopping and dining is still missing. And I think everything else is in there. Yeah, vibrant.
I think that the local shopping and dining is in there and the robust commercial areas. I mean, that suggests that you're, and vibrant, yes.
Were people very particular in calling out shopping and dining? Because I think of economic development as beyond shopping and dining, we have a lot of service retail, too, that's...
It was, it was a specific comment from the chamber, I think some of the concern was that as there is redevelopment in the city, are there still those B and C locations where maybe the smaller retailers or the mom and pops can still afford to stay in business? I think one way that that could be captured is talking about expanding the economic sustainability core value, which is on page fifteen, it might be a way to add that idea of mixing local and large businesses without adding too much or muddying up the clarity of the vision statement.
So in other words, the document has the concept, but the vision statement doesn't need to...
Correct.
...repeat it.
So does everybody think that they can memorize and recite the improved, the new and improved version?
Liberty or give me the local. Not, don't hold me. Pretty good.
I think so, yeah. Right after you take your oath of office, you should be required to recite it.
Okay, is there anything else on this?
Can we do independent businesses there? We can just add a note, we've got plenty of room in the page. Has that already been discussed?
Yeah.
So what's the date, the tentative date that we're moving it to, the, in the middle of April or the same March thirteenth or March?
What if, what if we spaced it out, so streetscape on the thirteenth and vision two weeks later?
All right, sounds good.
Back into the kickoff meeting for the schools area plan. Yeah, we can do it.
Will it be down by then, it'll be down before then, so you can do that.
Okay.
So the goal would be to get this out, we'll distribute it, let people have it, they'll have it then a full month, you know, for a period of about a month before the, and we can advertise that date, which would be the last meeting in March, as to when the council would have a public hearing and final consideration of it.
So is there a way so that Paul doesn't have to go through all those comments, can the comments be directed to just city clerk? So we just get them as an email?
Well, I think we...
Do they need to be tabulated more clearly?
We would put them in the staff report, I think they, I think, I think that's, you would want them there.
Okay.
Okay.
You would just want the ones from the boards and commissions or any general citizen who wrote?
All comments.
So some may end up going to the clerk, and they'll just get...
Yeah, but usually when the clerk gets a comment on a topical area, she gives it to the planning staffs or whoever it might be.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on this?
In the vision and core values?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see anything about renewable energy. There's energy efficiency.
Sure, we could certainly add a line that references, that references renewable energy. I think, I think some of that is captured in the overall goal of reducing greenhouse gases, I think the question of how you do that, there might be a range of options that might be appropriate, and so here, really the goal with the vision statement is to call out the goals of the city and then allow future efforts to describe the past.
All right, so then that is covered, so that doesn't need to go in there.
Not to tinker, it could be, start with reduction in GHG emissions through energy efficiency and renewables.
Sure. I figure that some, these...
The thing we're measuring is the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions.
Right. And then as far as the metrics go, the community indicators, those are worded such that they're aspirational, but not actual.
Yes, that's the, I'm pulling that up now, in the community indicators on page seventeen, let's see, "The following draft measures are intended to track progress, these will be reported as part of an annual community profile, the number of measures included for each principal, as well as the specifics of the measures, measures should be refined through ongoing conversation with the city's boards and commissions."
Okay. That's good for me.
Yeah, and that speaks to both the number of measures as well as what they are.
Just, sorry, go ahead. Just a quick comment, so not related to vision statement, but in one of the attachments, which I hadn't looked at before, but I thought it was useful that I'd point out for other people, is a chart on the pace of redevelopment, so I know I certainly field questions about, gosh, with all this development, we're running out of land, there's no land left in the city, and I thought it was actually really informative showing the number of acres in each planning opportunity area, the current development that's underway, the pace of development in the past fifteen years, and essentially showing that there's still a lot of opportunity left. So I thought that was very informative and is probably useful information for people.
If I could, just to clarify, that's on technical five, it speaks to the total acreage in the POAs, it's about two hundred forty acres, I think, and then twenty percent of that is right-of-way, so you're down to about two hundred usable acres for other purposes. And what it shows is that the rate of redevelopment since the year two thousand has been about two point three acres per year, that redevelopment includes not only the major projects like three oh one with Brad, but also the faceless, the things like the South Gate Shopping Center and the Smash Burger Shopping Center, which is no longer the Smash Burger Shopping Center, but that's how I know its name. So it's not only the big things, but also the little things as well. And so what this shows is that, to your point, the city could develop at that rate of two point three acres per year through the year twenty ninety, before the land and the POAs is exhausted. Well, that's the thing, that there is room to go faster as well, and also considering that some of these things are minor faceless.
Okay.
I just had a minor comment, I don't know if it's just my copy, but after page nineteen of the plan, I had two pages that seemed to be superfluous, maybe it's just my copy. But would you just please make sure that whatever you scanned and put up on the web does not include Gary Fuller's Express Pay account?
I am sorry about that, I suspect that that got copped in the bundler on the copier.
I'll just hand these, I don't know about the photograph either.
Yes, the document ends there at the bottom of page nineteen with the city's ADA statement.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
Just don't see if you're reading.
Yeah. All right, why don't we go ahead and move on to the next item, if we can, let's see.
Thank you, Paul.
What's the date?
March twenty-seven.
So this is campus plan update, I think the idea is basically every meeting from here on out to have the campus site as, if nothing else, just a brief topic to get updated on whatever's transpired recently on that, on that issue. So, Mr. Shields, maybe you could get us updated on what's the recent developments?
Sure, I could mention just a couple of highlights and the other members of the working group, I'm sure will wanna jump in. I think there's a key area of discussion that we want the council to be aware of. At the last, at the Thursday meeting, there was a discussion of next steps in the process, and the school board, I think, is going to be talking about this tonight as well. The, what the superintendent of the schools has proposed is that the next step would be to bring in consulting services to do a feasibility study on the school site. What the purpose of the feasibility study would be is to advance these school concepts that we've been sort of drawing out in very rough form, and do it in a more detailed way so that we know, we can really refine the square footage that we're building to, the number of classrooms per grade and per subject matter, the number of gyms, the number of gyms has become a sort of a big issue, three new gyms or two new gyms, how to address the parking, how much parking do we need, where can it go, how to deal with playing fields, both during construction and post-construction. Just to address some of those issues that we know are issues, we believe they're solvable, but to bring in architect to work through those designs, not to get to finishes, not to get to what the buildings would look like, but to block them out in a more detailed way than has been done to date, and with that blocking, also have more precise cost estimates. Now, so what that means is we would really need to get cracking on that procurement process for that feasibility study, we don't have a cost estimate yet for what that feasibility would be, but it would probably be about a hundred thousand dollars or possibly more than that. The other key thing for the council to consider is, so the other option had been to put out an RFP to build a new school, and that might have a gross maximum price in that RFP, that RFP would have a school program in it, but you would then have a design competition, and the architecture work would come to the city through the various different competing firms that would want to ultimately get the contract to build the school. To be able to, so that's sort of the decision point, do you just go out with that RFP and have that design competition process with a lot of these things still not fully formed in their minds as to how they best should work, or do we do this feasibility study and get these ideas refined up? So we have better transparency on what the major issues are and how we think we would best like to solve them, so that ultimately in an RFP that would go out later in the summer, those things could be spelled out in more detail. If the goal is to keep to that November referendum date, then what the council would be potentially putting on the ballot is a number of the cost of the high school, it's based on this architect's cost estimates. And that's different than we've done it in the past for school projects where, when you put it on the ballot, you actually have a, have the builder in hand through the PPA process, and you already have a guaranteed maximum price negotiated. So there is some political risk in that, that you might set a number that, when you ultimately go through the whole procurement process, there could be other things that come to light through that, and the number might need, might need to change. So you probably would need to err on the high side in terms of that number. From the discussion on Thursday, I think it's accurate to say that the working group was tending in the direction of saying, yes, we should go in the direction of this feasibility study, that ultimately would be a decision for the full council and the full school board, obviously. So that's kind of a summary of that issue, and there's probably more to say about it, but that's a quick summary. The, if we do that feasibility study route, though, the request would be in early March to issue that RFP, to select the vendor, the architecture firm to do the feasibility study in early April, to work through options in April and May, do the cost estimating in June, and then have a number that you're wrestling with there in July, and a vote on a referendum issue by your last meeting in July. That is a very tight and aggressive schedule for this scope of work. Obviously, if we were to issue the RFP for the whole thing and have that done by July, I think we've actually passed that date, quite frankly, in terms of being able to do that. So let me stop there and let others jump in and provide any other updates.
I think that's pretty accurate, based on what we talked about. I think it's a different approach than what we've taken in the past, but given that there's so many different ways we could work the campus project, I think the discussion in the working group is it felt like the feasibility study was an important step, so rather than just in-house, draw a bunch of different ways on how you could slice and dice the campus and how many acres it's freed up, we really thought that we needed to bring in someone with more expertise beyond the in-house people we have, to at least validate whether it's even a reasonable approach, I think in the latest sixty or seventy million dollar option, I think there's probably some, you know, questions about what, can you really do that, can you really save, you know, a third of the school, what's the value of that, and I think we just need to spend more time on the feasibility of that before we actually decide to issue a full-fledged RFP. So I know that, we recognize the risk of not being able to go to referendum with a guaranteed maximum price, but I think, in lieu of kind of how complicated the options look like right now, we thought it was probably a prudent step to take this additional feasibility step. But I think we'd still issue phase one of the RFP ahead of the referendum, right, the design, and then it was the detailed RFP that would be post-referendum.
Right, but we wouldn't, that is correct.
But the language would be finalized before you get responses back for the high-level RFP, right?
Yes.
There was a really detailed time schedule, that hasn't gone out to everybody, right?
It has not, I could throw it up on the board, but it is, it's like...
It's so hard, you have to look at it with your glasses to figure it all out.
So who advised you all as to whether you should get a feasibility study or not? What were you basing that decision on?
That was Dr. Schiller's idea.
So, but other than himself, was there anybody else in any professional...
And Bob Jones, too, Bob Jones was saying that we keep, we keep looking at different things, and if we really wanna think about this, we need an independent verification.
Is there anybody like a construction manager, I guess, is Bob Jones construction manager, what is Bob Jones' role, do you know?
Yeah, he's the owner's rep and the project manager as he goes through the procurement process, all the way through final delivery. So what the service he's been providing in this preliminary phase is cost estimating, but he's tried to be very clear that his cost estimating is based on some, you know, dollars per square foot by different types of construction materials and things like that, and, you know, vers, you know, doing some granularity to it, but it's been very rough, his cost estimating, and so this feasibility study would be a much, they would need to have more rigorous cost estimating resources as part of their team.
Would an architect be the best for cost estimating?
No, that's, that's kind of a specialized skill.
That's what I thought.
So architect is really, is a school person who knows how schools have to be laid out, and would do that blocking, again, not design the school, but at least block it out so the spaces make sense, and then as a member of their team, they have an engineer who would do, who is, their job is to do the cost estimating.
Actually, that's right and wrong. Today's architecture process, any mid-cap firm, doesn't necessarily have to be a huge conglomerate like Architus, has all the resources available, CAD, they can pretty much line out how much HVAC costs, how much electrical costs, what the requirements are, and if the specialist's in the school buildings, and should be, then, you know, you have that much better detailed refinement, so it's not the traditional architect design something, then the engineer puts in some pieces and finally it goes to cost estimator who figures out how much it costs, because it's all done pretty much upfront altogether. So, that's not to say it's perfect, so I do understand the difficulties, you're not designing a building, you're just designing a program, basically, so, although it's something that's unavoidable, and I think as a group we have to come to a consensus on how much land we wanna have available for development, I think that's key to everything, so, and the sooner we actually come to grips with that question and resolve that, then I think it allows the school population to then work on the rest of it.
Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask, Dan, what is the best way to get to that point that you just talked about? Is it with an RFP or is it through this, this other approach? Is it with an RFP or is it through this, this other approach?
RFP, I, I take it to mean, put it, put it out for a competitive process for a variety of architecture, construction companies to, to come in with that. Well, I think it, it does shift the, the risk of, of what we think it costs to the potential proposers. None of this is free, of course, so, you know, the opposite side of the risk is that, is that given not a lot of time, they're going to come in with a package that, that reflects the amount of time that can be spent on this. So, and I've already said that, and I agree with White, that I don't think we can get to that number before we have to put on a referendum approved by a state by July the ninth, I guess, is what that date would be. I don't, that time has already passed. So of course, the other side of the equation is if you just put out for one company to take a look at that, it probably in all likelihood would, would reflect at the end of that process, a, a good ninety percent certainty of what any other architect, contractor, consortium would, would put before us. However, there, they would not have to guarantee the cost or the time or any of their component. Be up to us to figure that one out. And I think that we have to determine whether the risk at that point then is, is, if, if the argument is sufficiently compelling to our constituency that the risk inherent in putting out a number that may not be right, could doom the referendum just on that, on those merits.
So how do we get enough information about the school that it gives the other side, the commercial development enough to go on? Because I, it seems to me that in order to make the case to the voters, A, it's the school that the public perceives that it needs slash wants, but there's also all the financial and economic elements that go along with that. So how do we, are we best with this feasibility work that would, then we would be able to take it to the development community in one way or another and say, this is what it is? Or would it be better off to go out with an RFP, get somebody in who says, this is what I will build, this is where I'll put it, and then you take that to the development community? I mean, what's the, how do you sync these two together so that at the same time you're building a school, but you're also minimizing your downside financial risk? Because I think the, the voters are going to look at both of those things, I think, you know, so.
We certainly have, I think, on the basis of any competitive process that you'll get, even if it's, if, even if it's incomplete, you'll get at least three good guesses at, at what it should be and how they would do it. So, and I wouldn't be surprised if, if all of them said, if, if we put in there that we want to maximize economic return, that, you know, they would scrape the school completely.
Or what? I'm sorry.
They would scrape the school completely. You would not have any elements of existing school left, just on the basis of cost and, and maxim, optimization of, of economic development.
So it seems to me that the fundamental question is, are we still aiming at a November referendum? And if we are, are people prepared to make the decisions that have to be made to go forward? And every time this comes up, I feel like we go back in circles. I need to know more about the economic development. I need to know about what, more about now. The question is, can we do the minute, the reduced school program? I need to know more about the costs, you know, the affordability. So if we're still in that data gathering stage and if we don't think we've brought the community far enough along with us that it makes sense to do an RFP for design competition, then I think we need to be realistic and say, we're not, we can't aim at this November referendum. If we want to aim at the November referendum, we got to draw some lines in the sand and go forward with the RFP design competition. I really think that's where we are. And I, I know myself, just this, in the last week, out in the community, I have heard resistance to the build new. And I know that will always be there, but I don't know to what extent we have brought the community along to where I think the bodies are, which is that build new would be preferable with the asterisk, if we can afford it. And I'm not sure that we have brought the community along. And so I'm starting to think that the November referendum just isn't feasible, but we do need to pick a date and really work towards it.
Well, I, I agree with you. And time, you know, it does seem like we are now, the sense of urgency is not, not driven by anything other than a November referendum and, you know, I think that, you know, I don't know why it has to be in November. It could be in the fall or May, it could be January. I think we could just pick a time where we can convince the people that need to vote on this, that we're doing the right thing. I, I, I would be afraid, fearful that if we just put out a notional number based on a feasibility study in November and said, it could be this, could be more. You know, I wouldn't vote for it. It's, it's like, you know, if the Pentagon said we need a next-generation bomber program and based on this pretty drawing, it could be three trillion dollars, would you make a decision based on that? I think the answer is no.
The question on procurement processes. So for City Hall, we're using the construction manager at risk. We're supposed to bring the construction manager earlier into the process so we have a better sense of what construction might be like early in the design phase? Is that help mitigate, or is that something that could help mitigate the solution here?
Yeah, so that's a good technique for when you're doing a substantial renovation with an addition. And so if renovation were still a big part of the school project, then I'm, I would probably recommend C Mar for that. The PPA, where you put out an RFP and laying out what you want, and then you have the design competition. When you're building new, it's a cleaner process and so it, it's well-suited to having your architect and your builder be married together and you just put in competing proposals. Two different things. One is probably better for renovations and one is better for building it.
But in the latest iteration, this revised down school program, what we think is the revised down essentially is a renovation addition, like we're proposing to save a third of the school, right?
Yeah, I think the way that Dr. Schiller would characterize is that it's a new school with some of the old building kept for auxiliary purposes. It, it looks a lot like some of the renovation and expansion options that we were considering. Yeah. I think that a, a big part of what has informed the school administration's recommendation for the feasibility study right now is grappling with these programmatic issues. When Dr. Schiller walked into the process, he did take it as a given that the program had been, was, was really agreed upon. And as he's been working with school staff, I think he's identified a lot of questions about the school program. And part of this feasibility study is a way to, to resolve those issues that have come up through, through the, the staff review of the program.
Yeah, I was going to say regardless of whether November is realistic or not, it seems like you need to do the feasibility step because of how complicated it's gotten and how many different ways to do it. So even if we weren't trying to shoot for November, it seems like the feasibility step might be a prudent thing to do.
So where, where does that leave you on the council member Oliver question, I guess? I mean, I, I think her question is the right question. I mean, and I, I know my answer to it and I think you all do too. I mean, I'd draw a bright line at Henderson and everything east of it is economic development and everything west of it is a new high school. And I feel like somebody needs to tell the schools that that is the position before we go into a RFP process so that we get a design and a cost estimate on a new high school west of the Mary Ellen Henderson facility. Anything short of telling them that, sort of, I mean, we, we could go at this forever, right? I mean-
I think there's, the Economic Working Group, now that it's chartered and hopefully meeting soon, it probably is a really good first discussion is, you know, what's the value of that remaining two or three or however many acres that the two, two gyms takes up versus the cost of tearing it down, rebuilding it and the long-term value you get from that remaining acreage? I think that's a pretty simple math problem that you can do that would show whether it's worth scraping everything or keeping up, you know, the remaining one-third. I'm guessing the math will show that it's probably better to try to take-
I'm guessing, guessing that too. And, you know, Mr. Z said as much. And I think everything that we heard from the OI process and others was that the market is going to pay attention, the more the city appears to be committed to, you know, a serious economic development program. And a number like six or seven or maybe eight is not as impressive as, as ten. And more importantly for me, it's, you know, in keeping with the sort of philosophy of the water sale agreement, which was, you know, we thought we got a great break from the judge who allowed us to develop up to ten acres. And my understanding, at least when I first came onto council, was we were, we were going to run with that and push the envelope as much as we possibly could. And I, I haven't changed my mind since, you know, that was the understanding in the water sale agreement. And so, I mean, do you think the Economic Development Working Group process can move at a pace that would enable us to feel, us here on council, to feel that we could answer the Oliver question in time to meet this timetable that you're talking about? And then second question is, as a participationist, I mean, doesn't, isn't there a case to be made that this November's election, rather than some off-date election? I mean, another fundamental tenet of the time that I've been involved in the city is, you know, we got away from having elections at times when people didn't expect the elections to be had, you know, May or March or June or whatever. You know, we have elections in November. And the turnout itself is an effort to reach out to everybody in the community and get the community's verdict. And then maybe the community's verdict is not what I want it to be, but it is the community's verdict.
I think to your question of bringing the community along, I think those that have paid attention thus far and attended our community meeting and listened to how we laid out this case were, they came along. So I think to, they understood that, yeah, build new is definitely preferred, but build new at a less expensive price is even more preferred or, so I think if we were to make an eff, more of an effort than we have at the moment to really get the rest of the community engaged, we could bring them along. I do think the bigger question is, Mr. Duncan wants to draw the line and say everything he used as development, is that the right answer? And that's, that's the question. I don't know, Mr. Schiller's can, in, in doing a feasibility study, can it be worded such, similar to how we worded the previous RFP, that we want to maximize the economic value, but we also want to minimize the price spent or save parts or-
Absolutely.
I mean, so an architect could come in and look at all these different things that we're tossing around and say, yeah, those gyms are not savable, that's a terrible idea, done. Or, yeah, that's an awesome idea, that really does, you're going to give up an acre of land, but it makes sense for the next twenty years to do it that way. Would, would that be what comes out of a feasibility study?
Yes.
I don't think an architect's going to be able to do economic analysis for you.
No, 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 not economic analysis.
So if your question is, does it make sense to tear something down?
No, we would have to tell them, this is the green line which you, we want you to stay west of.
Right. But would they be able then to, to look at both of those as a, here's a save the gyms option and here's a-
Yes, and, but they would, they would do it from the perspective of cost of the school program perspective. They would not do the analysis of, here's what you're losing as an opportunity cost if you keep your land in auxiliary gym use. That's up for a different, that's for the-
That's the working group, right?
Precisely.
Then the working group could be doing that work at the same time.
That's right.
So those results could be married together.
That's right.
So I would say that, Mr. Duncan has phrased the question before us as, where do we draw the economic development line? And I have said all along that, you know, at the end of the day, we provide the money and the schools figure out the program and what makes sense. And from my perspective, really, on, you know, their choice of renovation or renovation and expansion or build new. But what we really need to do, and economic development is a part of it, is we need to figure out what we can afford. And when I look at the campus planning project, the first thing that occurs to me is, what does this city need? This city does not, I mean, we are landlocked, two point two square miles. So anytime we can free up land to benefit the community, that's helpful. So I personally believe that when we go forward with the school, I want to make sure we see something that frees up as much land as possible. But, and there's a but. Question number one is, how big of a factor is it in financing? And I understand that it can, in theory, offset costs. And I understand that we have laid out ways to finance, and Mayor Tarter has suggested that there may be other ways to finance by using commercial development. But we, we don't know all that. And I'm still leery about relying overly much on the benefit that we'll get from economic development. And I believe there will be a benefit and I believe that benefit is good for the city. But I am concerned about relying on it to figure out how much we can afford. And I think that if you're really going to get the community involved, I think we went a long ways towards showing people that economic development, commercial development was really critical to providing some offsetting benefits for the costs involved in this project. But we do need to balance, I think the fundamental question still has to be asked, for our community, do all ten acres have to go to commercial development? I understand financially, yes, that makes the most economic sense. But I hear a hunger in the community for more recreational space and more green space and more open space. And so that's another reason why I don't want to count on a full ten acres of economic development to say that it's going to pay for the school. And I'm, you know, I'm particularly concerned right now with, with our most recent track record with economic development in which we have open retail spaces and leases that haven't resulted in a business operating. And so I'm particularly leery about including the ongoing revenues that will come from economic development. Now, having said all that, it's important, we absolutely need it as a city, we need more, you know, we're landlocked, we're, we have a limited amount of land and we need more commercial development. So I look at it and I go, what are, what is it that we can, we can afford to spend right now with an uncertain payoff from economic development? And in my mind, it's not a hundred and twenty million. I, you know, policy would save forty million because that's what our debt service says. I think it's more than that. I, you know, I think what we as a group need to do is to say, and if everybody else thinks we can spend a hundred and twenty million banking on future economic development, then let's take that vote and tell the schools, go, go do a new build, give us ten acres, spend what you like, we're prepared to pay for that. But if what we feel like is it's closer to sixty to eighty, if we give them that number, they can make the best decision for the program.
I mean, I guess it's, it's, that's thoughtful. I guess as I've said before, and the managers indicated, my understanding of what we're going to get in terms of information on the economic potential of, of the ten acres, there's going to be a, you know, a, a high number, a number that we're fairly comfortable with and a, wow, if things don't work out well, here's, you know, a low number. So there'll be a range and we'll present that range- So there'll be a range, and we'll present that range to the citizens, and the citizens will vote with the understanding that, you know, we show up to work every day aiming to hit the high. I mean, that's what we do. And, you know, if we hit the high, here's what the school's gonna cost in terms of taxes over the life of the loan. If we don't hit the high, then it's obviously gonna cost, you know, more in property taxes. And voters should have the opportunity to, you know, express their confidence or lack thereof in us and staff, based on, you know, their kind of expectations of what we've done so far, track record that we've built over the last 15 years. I understand there's some skepticism about, you know, some buildings that don't fill up as soon as they open. But again, that's an educational opportunity to share with the voters the fact that that's just the way the market works. Sometimes restaurants open and they close, and sometimes grocery stores get bought out by, you know, hedge funds and they don't open. I mean, you know, that's the kind of sophisticated conversation about economic development that we need to have with the voters. And if the school referendum's an opportunity to do that, I think that's a good thing. You know, as to the specifics of what the community is saying, you all who are, you know, up for reelection this cycle or maybe more tuned in than I am, I mean, the thing that I saw recently was the, and spoke to the boosters president, was a fairly strong backlash against the notion that we're gonna preserve, you know, to be generous, you know, decrepit athletic facilities to save a few bucks in the short run. And basically, short, the athletic program was not well received by at least one group in the community. And I read that letter to say that, you know, academics and athletics are of sort of mind and body are of equal importance in our community. And, you know, we can debate that one way or the other all night, I suppose. But again, I mean, I guess it's a question of, you know, are we willing to do the work that's required to gather the information that we feel like we need to get the thing on the ballot, and then, you know, from the end of July, all of August, all of September, all of October, up to November, have a, you know, serious conversation while many people are out knocking on doors, running for office, while everybody is expecting to vote in November. I think we're gonna have a high turnout in November just because of things happening statewide and nationally. I mean, to me, it's a great opportunity to, you know, challenge us all to gather the information we need and take it out and see how people react to it. There's risk involved, but, you know, again, no great thing is accomplished without some risk. I mean, I'm just paralyzed with fear that, you know, we will sit here 20 years from now, some of you will, and say, gee, you know, when money was cheap, we did not build the facilities to last, you know, two or three generations, as did our forbearers in the early 1950s. I mean, fundamentally, the building that they put up in 1952 is the building that we are still talking about today. And I would like us to meet that mark.
Mr. Snyder?
I share a lot of the views that have been expressed. I agree with Phil that that would be one measure of failure, but another measure of failure would be a vote for a school that puts the city at virtually certain financial risk. That would be failure, in my view, as well. And so it's hard for me to imagine that we can get these two streams together in a way that minimizes the failure on either. What I would define as failure would be inadequate, failure would be inadequately providing for the future of the schools. Another definition of failure would be, we do something that jeopardizes the future of the city as a financial entity. And for me, it's really hard to figure out how we can prevent both of those failures and get something on the ballot by November. But it can stay there as a guideline. I think it's useful to keep us moving forward. But I'm not wedded to November if we end up with a vote that says, oh, yeah, we want a new school. And for those of us who have to implement that vote, realize that we're putting the city at very high risk of financial, of financial failure. And I don't want, either of those, failure to provide for the schools and submitting the city to unacceptable risk would be two definitions of failure on my part. And that's what I wanna avoid.
I just wanna say two small things. Dr. Schiller today did meet with the Athletic Boosters and the Athletic Department and Danny Schlitt about that letter and about their concerns about the Athletic Department. He said he had a very productive meeting. And I don't know what the exact result was, but I think the Athletic Boosters were able to take a deep breath and say, oh, you're not trying to eviscerate the program. So I think that was, but I don't know where they actually all ended up. The second thing is, the high school was indeed built for the first time in 1956, 1954, whenever it opened. But it's not the exact same building that was built. And the city at the time knew that they weren't gonna have the same, that the city was gonna grow, things were gonna change. So they built the gym first, and they built some classrooms. And then as the population changed, there were additions. So there wasn't, there was never the expectation that we're gonna build one high school and it's gonna last for 50 years. And thus, we have ended up with what we have, which is not what should be aspired to either. But the reality at the time is, I have all these historical materials in my office of bond referendums that went through over time, and it's the same conversation that we're having right now. There's, because we're little, we just don't have that same flexibility that other people do. And the risk that we take on by borrowing so much is so much bigger than it is for larger jurisdictions. And that has been true all along, and I think it will continue to be true for whoever sits here 20 years from now. So I wish we could have the moonshot and dream big and get the $120 million amazing high school and never have to worry about it. But I think there's just too many variables. It scares me, as Mr. Snyder, I would hate to have the failure on the other end, that we have put the city at such financial risk to get that when the incremental way, the false church way, has served us pretty well for the last 60-some years.
Ms. Hardy?
I was just gonna, can we talk next steps?
So, this decision's not going to be made tonight. I think the main thing is a heads-up. The school board is considering, instead of developing that, sort of the big RFP, instead taking this intermediate step of doing this feasibility study. So that's the update. The other kind of key thing that is...
Before we get off that, can I just ask, with respect to the feasibility study, can you find out whether that would actually inform an RFP? In other words, that would allow us to say, ask for this, not that?
That's, its purpose is to sharpen up what ultimately would be the big RFP.
Okay. And then also whether some kind of construction manager would be appropriate to advise us of the best path to go forward? I feel like, I think Dr. Schiller's an incredible resource. But I'm wondering, is there someone we need who really knows how to manage the costs of a project? Not necessarily how to propose one or how to build one, but someone whose job it is really is to ride herd on the most efficient and cost-effective ways to go through this process?
Well, that is specifically, you know, Bob Jones' role and...
He's a construction manager?
Yes.
Okay.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that position strongly. You will not have Bob Jones be the construction manager of this project. He has shown time and again his inadequacies, and for you to continue down that path is unacceptable. I can, no stronger way I can say that without asking for him to be terminated.
That is, that's the scope of work for Arcadus or Arcadus. So that's, you know, I think that's a contractual issue that needs to be taken up with the school board.
Well, you know, you need to have the courage to express some of these thoughts. Because time and again, we've been subject to erroneous estimates and other kinds of things that, you know, I've put forth in public, which, you know, I hate embarrassing anybody, but, and then we're back to this again. So there's a failure management then.
So Bob Jones has said, he gave us some very general numbers for construction, right? I've heard that at many meetings.
Right.
But he doesn't feel competent to give us a more detailed construction estimate.
Because none of those construction estimates are based on even, you know, on architectural plans. And so to get real construction estimates, you need to have some baseline of architectural plans to go with them.
And they're just based on per square footage? Like, I think he's taking 300 square foot, multiply by square footage.
Yeah, but I mean, that's just sort of like, I could probably go on the internet and get a, what's cool construction cross-run, and then multiply it times whatever number we're given. I mean, I don't think that's a lot of value added. Maybe it's not requested to be. In other words, we haven't sought that from him. He hasn't promised that for us. But I don't think we've got to date. It's really been a lot of value added as far as the numbers go, for whatever reason. And I don't know the best way to get that. Maybe it is a feasibility study. Let me ask you with respect to feasibility study, would there actually be bidding? In other words, we put this out for bid for architecture firms, give us, you know, give us your price, give us your scope of work, or whatever it is, or we'd give them a scope of work.
So that would be a competitive process.
And that would take like about a month to track someone down?
Well, he, the schedule that has it laid out, it'd be out for bid for two weeks. That's a very short period of time.
And would that have a maximum cost as well? Like, in other words, this is a, up to $100,000, or is that some open-ended?
It could be scoped that way. I think, I think that's a discussion for Thursday morning in terms of exactly how that would be scoped.
I don't think you're gonna get any receptivity in two weeks. Maybe the only proposal will be Arcadus.
It's a very, it's a very tight schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Should it be in your, Cindy, like, four weeks? Is that enough time to put that RFP out?
I obviously haven't done a school procurement, but when we do any of our facilities or transportation, we tend to look at a three-week, a four-week window.
So the other update is the Economic Working Group. The Planning Commission is making its assignments tonight. The Economic Development Authority has asked Mike Novotny, or put forward Mike Novotny and Bob Young with Brian Williams as an alternate.
I was at the Planning Commission meeting, if you would like to know who they voted. It would be the chair, the vice chair, and because of the chair schedule, they added Ms. Hockenberry as an alternate.
So Russ Padisca and who's the vice?
Andy Rankin.
And Andy Rankin, okay, great.
Okay. And we've had some discussions, sort of, maybe not fully publicly, but some folks have expressed interest. And I've had discussions with each of the persons that have expressed interest. And for the group's discussion, the thought was maybe Dave Snyder and myself, and if we need an alternate or want an alternate, Letty Hardy. And so I don't know what folks think of that, but that's sort of where I think we are right now. Let me with folks' approval. Okay. So I think maybe we got our group as well.
Yeah.
And we should try to, I would say a couple of things as well. There's been a lot of things kind of bantered about, well, the working group should do this and that. And I'm happy to undertake all those things, but I don't wanna overpromise things. You know, we've got just a couple of weeks in some regards to get some answers. And some of that's gonna require outside expertise. In terms of what the value of things are, we don't have, I don't think, the in-house capacity, even though some of us are professionals in real estate, to be able to give estimates of costs and things like that, or return, economic returns. So I don't wanna overpromise what this group will do, other than just roll up the sleeves and really get into things as much as we can. But I do feel that it's a fairly short fuse.
All right.
And so when was it, Wyatt, you'd suggested a time or date?
I'd suggested a kickoff meeting on Friday, March 3rd.
Is that next Friday?
It's Friday, 13 days, or, yeah.
All right. I mean, it'd be great if we can get together before then. I don't know if, I know we had a conversation about trying to get together.
That was the earliest day that I thought could work. Scheduling this is gonna be, with the size of it, but we'll work that out.
And I think the idea is to have the meetings early, 'cause most folks have, to get places at like 7:30 in the morning, and try to keep the meetings pretty tight, like an hour and a half, two hours, something like that. And Wyatt, do we have the ability to hire consultants, or how would that work if we wanted to hire, for example?
We would have to go back to the bodies to, sort of, the old rule has been to use funds out of that, the campus planning account, which currently has a balance of $20,000, needs the approval of both bodies. And so this feasibility study that the council needs to say yes to, even though that would really be managed on the school's side. The Economic Working Group, we'll need the school board saying, yeah, that's a good use of the money, even though we'll be managing it on our side.
Okay.
We have a school campus working group on Thursday, right?
Correct.
Early, but you have something else you have to...
Yeah, I'm planning to go to that meeting. All the planning staff will not be there.
Starting at nine?
I'll likely be the only city staff member at the meeting on Thursday. That's right.
Nine? Do we have an agenda?
We're working on that.
Okay, other comments, questions?
And what about the, getting the information on the website?
Yeah, I was just checking. I know that that was being done today, and so it's about to go up. Yeah.
Anything else about scheduling issues, comments, questions?
Just two quick ones. The April is the child abuse awareness, and we've had a number of citizens that want some serious programming. So I'm just gonna say I raised it and ask you to come back with what sort of programming you're gonna do. Great, okay. And then, we're getting citizen inquiries about immigration-related issues. And I thought it might be helpful in closed session or an open session to have the city attorney advise us as to what the legal context is in which we operate. I know the Council of Governments is looking at the same thing.
Okay, other comments?
We're still planning not to have a meeting on Monday, March 6th.
Yes. Okay. All right, what else we got? Anything else? Okay, we ready to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.